Good afternoon, everyone. We are in the community home meeting for Tuesday, July 11. And as I said earlier, Captain Swallow, please welcome plus Gilhoomish Awalele. Welcome to the traditional territory in Squamish Nation. We have adopted the agenda and first up is a U31 adaptation climate change in Squamish report.
Thank you Chair. My name is Yorah Solmishis. I'm the Director of Community Planning. And with me have got Gary Buxton, the General Manager. Today, we're bringing a report that was done last year on adaptation of climate change in Squamish. It's taken us a little while to get this report on council's agenda, but we're there now. Unfortunately, the authors of the report weren't available for this date. So we are presenting this report on their behalf. The report was commissioned by the district essentially to inform the OCP process, the drafting of the new OCP, as well as the background documents that were used in the early stages of engagement. So the purpose of the report is to provide climate science information, essentially looking at past trends that are specifically relevant to the district as well as the future projections. The report also outlines potential impacts on climate change near term and long term. It makes a number of recommendations for adaptation measures in both policy action and other actions. And so overall, it is to inform the OCP process. The main future projections compared to the 1961 to the 1990 baseline are two. Basically, it will be warmer by 1.7 degrees by 2050 and the region will be 6% wetter annually. Wetter winters, drier summers. That is the, that's the, those are the main projections. In terms of major impacts, as I mentioned, there are near term impacts and long term impacts. The near term are sea level rise is agreed at one meter projection is what policymakers should be using by 2100. In BC, increase forest fires as well as extreme precipitation events. For the longer term priorities, so meaning that may not have an immediate or negative impact or consequences, these include the changing river flows in terms of quality and quantity, water supply vulnerability, economic development, health and food security. That's not to say that there won't be other impacts, but these are the main categories. And so the report dives into a number of recommendations. I could go through all of these, however, they are quite extensive. We have taken each one of these sections and have considered it in the OCP drafting process. Most of these recommendations were weaved into the OCP. There is an adaptation section in our OCP, however, it is fairly brief. And that's because the policy, what we, the approach we took was to integrate those policies throughout every single section in the OCP. And so as I mentioned, these are recommendations go to sea level rise, forest fires, extreme precipitation, and then the longer term impacts such as river flows, water supply, economic development, resource and tourism industry, particularly food security and health. If council would like me to go through all the recommendations, we can, however, maybe in the interest of time.
Maybe, maybe focus in on a couple key ones.
Sure.
Particularly, there's a lot on water supply issues and river flow and sea level rise. Maybe just some key drivers of our infrastructure issues.
Yes, and a lot of it is water related, even with the warming of the temperatures. You know, that has an impact on the hydrological cycle. So the sea level rise certainly one of the main implications. So the recommendations go into supporting and implementing a coastal flood hazard mitigation strategy, which we are doing through the Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan. Update and adapt a coastal flood risk mitigation strategy frequently. So the report recommends doing an update every 10 years, make sure that the projections we are using are accurate. Continue to actively participate and contribute to flood mediation initiatives. Accommodate sea level rise through adhering to an amended flood construction levels. So that goes back to doing regular reviews, whether our flood construction levels that we are using are still accurate. Employ a precautionary approach for ongoing planning and development in areas that are vulnerable to sea level rise. Encouraging adaptation measures that concurrently reduce greenhouse gas emissions as well as enhance adjacent environmental values so that one of those examples would be a nature's diaphragm system. Promote, enable and incentivize programs to encourage the development, developments that are more resilient to sea level rise. And we have used that as one of the key policies in the OCP. We talk about allowing the development that's been already planned for, such as waterfront landing and the oceanfront in the downtown area, but in the future, moving those big developments outside of the areas that are severely affected by sea level rise. Establishing long-term plans for managed response and retreat from the vulnerable areas and enhancing the emergency response capabilities. So those would be the main policies that it comes to, or the recommendations coming from the sea level rise section. Want to talk about that before we move on?
Sure. Okay.
I know you talked about moving some of these recommendations into the OCP, but there's other policy documents or like our subdivision and control bylaws.
That's right.
I know we're looking at an update of that.
Yes.
So are these moving in there as well?
They are. And maybe Gary can speak to that.
Particularly with respect to adaptation around sea level rise and river floods or changing river flows. The flood hazard bylaw, which is, it's close to coming to council, will deal with a lot of those issues, deal with FCLs and protecting. It's really adapting and accommodating to those flood risks. We're not at the retreat point yet, but that's sort of an active part of discussions. Precipitation subdivision development control bylaw, the amount of storm water that we handle, manage, retain, detain is, those standards are in the subdivision development control bylaw. That I suspect is going to ramp up as we go through time, as we get better data about how precipitation events are affecting us, will start to ramp up those standards.
Ted and Susan?
Well, actually, I was hoping we were going to talk about fire.
Okay. One more question, Susan?
Thank you. This is really great work and doing flood construction levels is incredibly important to the community. My concern, and I've mentioned this a few times in natural asset management, is that my, my concern for the community is that without, we've done a little bit of natural asset measurement with our, with our, oh my goodness. With the sensitive areas mapping. That was what, so yeah, the sensitive area, we've done really great work with sensitive areas mapping. We do not measure our infrastructures starting at the natural assets that we rely on in order to like our sewer system and our water system. The report touches on it a little bit with BC Hydro's assessment of the glacier. They've done extensive, at first I thought we had no information about the glacier because our water supply, as it says in our water plants, is 70% from our glacier and 30% from precipitation. And as we have drier summers and wetter winters and the snowpack changes, we're going to have, that ratio is going to change. And as we dry up, we're going to have more glacier melt. And the projections from BC Hydro on our glacier are actually quite concerning to me. And you know, I'm doing a project for school on this right now, so I read extensively on the glacier. And they've done reports that basically say within 20 to 30 years, 70% of our glacier will be gone and melted. So that's not very far along. That's actually my lifetime, so it does concern me. And it means that we'll have an immense amount of water for a short period of time. So we'll have a lot of runoff and since our aquifer is low, low volume, high flow, we don't have any storage. Are we planning to build new infrastructure for a different aquifer or looking at different aquifers and actually including them in our plan as we, you know, like end saving up money so that we have resources to be able to change our water system or implement a redundant water system as we, as we move towards a system of lower snowpacks and glacier melting? I know it's huge question. I'd like to look at that in our asset plan in 2018.
Yeah, and I think this report lays some foundation to where we don't have data, where we do have data, where we need more data and how that will affect. It starts to allude to it in, you know, more water conservation here, we're starting to see that.
Me too.
So, and I think it will eventually get to a comprehensive asset, natural asset analysis. That's currently not our burden, but this report certainly starts that foundation.
Yes, yes, and actually identifies that as one of the vulnerabilities is that we do have this one source of water and that we should be looking at alternatives in the long term.
My, I guess my concern is budget carrying. So, you know, we, we talk about these things and we realize the concern, but because it's not right in front of us and things happen at a glacial pace in our, in all governments. And planning for resources is going to take a long time. So do we need to start putting more money aside to be collecting, to be able to understand our data more comprehensively? Right now, our system contains our studies, but it doesn't contain the data from, from the province or from all the studies that have been done. There is a large amount of data and maybe integrating it into our, into our GIS system. Accurately assessing it is the first step so that we understand, so we're able to watch the recession or progression of the glacier and the snowpacks and just sort of take our water supply into account with asset planning. And we are doing an asset management renewal in 2018 in our budget. And maybe that's something we want to scope a little bit better and resource properly so that we clearly understand the financial implications of having an adequate water supply in our future. And 20 to 30 years doesn't seem that far away.
Ironically, the glacial pace is speeding up.
Exactly.
No longer indication of slowness per se. And I think as councillor's supposed, that conversation will come into our asset management conversation and we can start picking off from the foundation of this report into our asset management and really start extending the definition of what we see as assets in the community, particularly over water supply issue, that's I think a fundamental one. But I think that's a whole piece and this report lays a good foundation to take that next step.
Yes.
Exactly. It starts at our infrastructure as well. So I want to look at the supply side a little bit better. That's my own personal, I know it has to go through everybody else.
We know more about our water today than we did, much more today, but still so much more. Let's move on and we'll get to fire.
All right. Increased forest fires is the other short-term priority for the district in terms of policies and actions. So the recommendations are quite extensive, participate in regional fire risk assessments and incorporate recommendations into long-term planning and development for the district. So not just looking at the district, but working with our regional partners. Follow the recommendations of the community risk assessment and identify high hazard areas, which we are currently doing that right now. Our emergency department is looking at what are the high hazard areas for wildfire. And that will inform the development permit area that we will be drafting next. Require additional interface fire mitigation measures for new developments in these areas. Again, this work will inform that. Facilitate residents in making their properties more fire smart. Update community wildfire protection plan. Require all new developments and individual hazard units with, with interface area to pass specific fireproofing requirements. Again, we would be able to control that through a development permit area. Begin managing interface areas for lower fire risk levels. Participate, participate in an ongoing working between district, provincial government, local forestry companies, First Nations and other stakeholders to create and maintain a comprehensive fire risk mitigation strategy. Centralize and constitute urban development to decrease the urban wide, wide-lined fire interface area. So that's really about the growing, increase emergency response capabilities to deal with increased forest fires. And that's it.
Thank you. And this is, you know, with all the forest fires going on right now, I was just happy to see the reducing the risk, you know, like mitigation measures for redevelopment, but also, you know, people that have lots of scrub around their houses. And I think that's something, this is something we should take an action on right away is, and I saw the chief was here earlier, but he's gone. But I, you know, I just can't, this is my biggest fear in Squamish is fire getting going up the hill.
Yes.
And I, so when I drive around and I see areas where there's lots of brood on the side of the hill, I think, man, you know, we should be cutting all that down. So I don't know if we, you know, I know this is a report, but how do we get action on some of these sooner or later?
You need, you need that comprehensive community risk assessment to know where, where that money is best invested. Sorry, I'll defer to Ms. Glenda.
Thank you Mayor Huntsman. In this year's work plan, emergency services and the fire department do have a wildfire safety plan project happening. The scope of that, I can't speak to you right now in detail, but we are starting.
Well, you know, with, with all the fires in the news, I'm sure the community would be primed to start taking some of the advice in that report. So I don't know, something we put on our website or, you know, like the firemen who go around and check your business every year or sprain their systems and all that kind of stuff. Anyway, I just, I would, if someone wanted to come to my yard and say, oh, you should take all those dead trees out of the back of your property, you know, I think we should be acting on it as soon as possible.
Yeah, just to that point, I know, having lived in California, it's the law there now for interface areas, that you have to clear back 30 meters if you're, if you're in an interface area where there's a, stand up possibility of brush fire, you know, as we saw with the Malibu Fire and all of those there, they've had, so something to consider.
Yeah, well, part of, this will get part of the address for the DPA guidelines because you can do things like register covenants that require that long-term maintenance.
For developers possibly too, or there's large-scale development on an interface area, you're about.
But in order to finalize this development permit area, we need to know where, where it is, where those higher-risk areas are.
Yeah, and our sub-scope to the people up in the interior is just an amazing, really awful situation right now. Next.
Okay. So the final near-term implication is extreme precipitation events. So the recommendations are to build on completed regional analysis on peak river flows, river flows. Collaborate on an investigation of regional trend analysis of intense precipitation events in Squamish and determine if there, if there already has been an increase in extreme events over the past 50 years. So there's a bit of an information gap. Collaborate on an investigation of future projected changes in extreme events. Require all new infrastructure developments in the district to consider climate change impacts, which would be in the climate change, climate investigations. Require all new developments to identify the hazards that they are exposed to and identify measures taken to mitigate these hazards. Establish an ongoing multi-stakeholder working group to explore how the district can enhance its emergency response capabilities. Improve storm droid and catchment capacity to accommodate larger participation events. Determine the end, determine and follow best practices surrounding hardscaping with special attention to ditches and paved areas. Complete a comprehensive emergency management plan. Engage with local and topical experts to better understand how the community can be prepared to respond to extreme or unusual precipitation events. And finally, prioritize drainage pump stations in emergency response plants. So one of the, one of the key pieces that ties a few of these recommendations is again, knowing where those hazard areas are, especially for new developments.
Absolutely, and our Integrated Flood Hazard Management Plan is starting to inform that.
Yes.
I guess one question to the Flood Hazard Management Plan is, in some areas, maybe we're not being aggressive enough and future focused enough to make the really tough decisions on some of the die allocation areas or that type of thing. So as we adopt these plans, how do we make sure they're nimble enough to be able to move the die or if we need to?
That's a good question.
Nimble enough from, sorry, I got timing.
We sometimes make these plans and then we see them as marching orders. And we don't integrate into the, a more of a organic approach to them. I mean, in the, I mean, plans are really good and they're strategic and, but they're the launching point. And if new information comes in or if a tough decision has to be in front of council of the day, we need to make sure that our plans are nimble enough that they react to those situations. And sometimes I find like our plans lag a little bit. And sometimes we take the path of least resistance, whether it's politically or financially or whatever. And if we need to make those hard decisions, we kind of lie back on this plan that maybe took a fairly moderate approach. But that tough decision needs to come forward too. So I just find that sometimes we rely too much on the plan and we don't actually be introspective about the plan once we've, once we've adopted it. And I guess it's more a statement than a question, so don't bother answering. See, I made my point. Okay.
It strikes me that there is an intersection between getting a lot of rain suddenly, but having longer, drier summers and a lot of fire. And I think a couple of years ago, one of our staff people was talking about Kelowna using storage tanks in some of their higher up neighborhoods so that they store rainwater runoff, which we will get more of, to help with fire situations, which we will get more of. And so I think to me too, with this report, it's trying to find those connection points that we can, because they say right in here, there are some advantages. We can take advantage of some of these adaptation measures. And one of them is that we should be able to store more rainwater in some of our higher neighborhoods that are at the interface so that we're not relying on pumping water uphill during a forest fire. That that water is there and can be tapped into. And it could be used by residents, could be used by firefighting services, but it's there and stored because we collected it all winter, that sort of thing. So I think it's just being mindful that these aren't policy areas in and of themselves, that the risk of forest fire is connected to our ability to store water than to falling more in the winter in larger events. And so, yeah, just want to make sure we don't lose sight of that.
That's a good point. Do you want to comment on that or just not?
Well, see, from a stormwater perspective, stormwater management, we really need to get started on the asset management. We've deferred it for another year and I think we need to get a handle on what we have, both natural and physical, and we need to start that. It's tough to plan if you don't have your assets accounted for at least.
But truly in next year's.
Yes.
Opposed financial plan.
Yep.
Gary just basically said exactly, like, I really feel like this plan isn't really policy related, but really allows us to figure out what needs to be measured so that we can keep track of things over the, over time and really understand, you know, how our community is being affected by climate is going to be different. You can't just say it's getting hotter, it's getting, you know, it may actually get cooler because of our location. And we are going to also have impacts of the fact that we will have a lot of water for a long time. And other, it makes it a desirable place to live. As, as other people dry up, we are going to have migration of people from all over, from all over the place. So, so the amount of population that we can hold and understanding, like, we've done a lot of the work, as Patty has said, that many, many of the policies in place, like where, where we put our population growth. But as Gary said, like understanding our assets. And, you know, our stormwater, I look at as we're building developments, we do them in such isolation and don't really understand, you know, how much of that green space is being used to drain our stormwater. We rely on trees and large amounts of green space. I know past the Adventure Center, that whole area is a huge part of our stormwater management plan. But if there was a development proposal for it, we would look at it in isolation of that. So mapping our systems of natural assets of where we contain our, of how it relates to our hard infrastructure, to me, has been incredibly important. And it is in a lot of other communities now. There's many other communities that we wouldn't be starting to do this on our own. There's asset management, natural asset management plans, Gibson's is a huge proponent of that. And I agree with councillor Elliott as well, is that looking at the, the things that we can do with, with preserving our water and having it at higher elevations and all of those little things, or even just getting people, you know, having municipally available rain barrels so that people can collect their own water and manage to water their lawns instead of out of our systems. And getting towards water meeting and all of these things. But without the communication tools and the data put somewhere where the public can understand it, it's going to be really difficult to communicate our adaptation compared to mitigation and our, like the story we tell behind that without creating panic and being like, we're on top of the data collection and here's how we're going to use the data to inform us. And, you know, if we, we have so much data from the past, we can populate our mapping systems and actually understand how we're using up our resources and how some are losing.
You made 800 points in one, in one sentence.
800 points.
So all good points.
Map our assets, collect the data, make it meaningful. That's the point.
Thank you. I don't even know where to start now. But all good points. And it's coming up, our budgetary decision is coming up in 2018 with regard to the assets. Strategic plan will inform exactly the scope of that to include natural assets and that type of thing. A lot of communities are doing snowpack analysis. There's SFU, I think, or UC's done one on the whole North Shore. Be great if the corridor, Whistler, Squamish Pemberton, Lions Bay, whatever, actually went in together and said, hey, we'd like you to do one on the Sea to Sky. Has it been done now? That's good because a couple months ago it hadn't been done.
Yeah, BC Hydro, there's a bunch of papers written on it.
Yeah, but I'm not sure that's in depth that we're, we're trying to get it at. Anyway, all, I mean, fundamentally, we need good data to make good decisions, so. Did you have it, Juan, where do you want to go through or?
Those are really the kind of prominent priority areas. The rest of them are more long-term. We could go over changing river flows, water supply vulnerability, economic development, food security and health. So if we still, we've got three minutes until the next agenda.
Actually negative seven.
Okay.
Ted and Karen?
I just wanted you to flip back to the food security one and then I'll read that while you're talking to Karen.
I know the OCP is already really big. And you mentioned that there's an adaptation section, which is quite short, but then these policies are integrated. And I wonder if there's a way symbolically that we can link policies that appear in other places back to specific sections in the OCP. And maybe that's an online future work, like over time, we can do that with the online version so that people can see where policies are showing up. Or in the adaptation section, say, these policies are incorporated into the following section. So at least people don't see like a really short adaptation section. They go, ooh, not sure they're just thinking about this. But if we say like, look in section three and seven and 17.4.
Yes, we could have a statement in there just saying, you know, in addition to these policies, there's all these policies that are integrated in housing lands, agriculture.
Yeah, so that people can see that it's far reaching, that we've got to be thinking quite broadly about our adaptation strategy and that there are, those policies are actually there. So maybe that's the easiest way to do it is just kind of refer.
And there's a whole piece about where infrastructure lies with regard to adaptation policies. So do we want to at some point relocate sewage treatment plant if it's really in the path of high water? Or not, I'm just, I don't want to get a lot of anybody, but those are big, big infrastructure issues that we need to be considering with that adapt, how adaptation land.
Yes, and I think it will be in our OCP and it's already in our emergency management plan that there is a policy statement that any critical facility should be located outside of housing areas.
Any more question on this? I want to maybe just, too bad Mr. Biggs. I want to, maybe just, too bad Mr. Biggs wasn't here. And I love the fact they used it, one of his students helped write the report. Perhaps when we come back with some of the asset management stuff, we'll see if they can come to the meeting and make sure we're getting some feedback from them as we deliberate on that in the future.
Yes, Mr. Biggs was very interested to continue to be involved in the adaptation discussion.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Uh, next slide, that's up. Is Tim here?
Yep.
Okay. We have the Senior Center Revitalization Project Team Recommendations. I know Catherine Rock and you are both facilitating that group, so if you want to join us, Catherine. Here's Tim. And. Community meetings are always very collaborative and we want to make sure we hear it from the community. So if you do want to make a statement or ask a question, please just put your hand up and I'll acknowledge you. If it becomes a little bit too many people, because we have limited time, please help by maybe having a representative speak if you're all sharing the same opinion. I will pass over. The staff wants to be come up. Oh. I have to go? Should get a table. You're going to staff me. Thank you, welcome.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. We are here today to present the Senior Center Revitalization Project Team's Recommendations to you. My name is Tim Hoskin. I'm the Director of Recreation Services. Beside me is Shannon Goach, Program Specialist. We have Catherine Rockindell, our Community Engagement Specialist and Facilitator, who we contracted on to help with facilitation of the meetings. We also have in the audience many of our project team members, whose recommendations these are. And I would just want to thank them for their hard and long work engaging the community to bring forward some recommendations to revitalize the senior center. So depending on the season, the senior center is also, has been open in the evenings two to three nights a week for all ages. And this currently has some programs, dance, art and yoga. We've had, we have monthly collaboration meetings with the Senior Center Society. And just a little bit of background, the senior center was open in 2009. It was a community amenity contribution. It's operated by Recreation Services. It currently operates generally eight thirty to four thirty. But as I mentioned, we have two or three nights per week where we've had programs in there. We also have a collaboration agreement with the Squamish Senior Center Society, whose role is to fundamentally support and promote volunteerism and advise staff on programming at the center. I believe you're all familiar with the Parks and Recreation Master Plan. There is significant community engagement on the master plan, including with the seniors, the Senior Center Society and seniors within the community. And the recommendations from the project team today do closely align with the Parks and Rec Master Plan. In short, the master plan states that the senior center is not meeting its potential. It can be, it can be a lot more. And the recommendations should get us into a very vibrant center. These are the recommendations. Expand program offerings, consider a change routine, programming commitment to seniors nine to four, and open the center to the full community from four to closing. That's the Parks and Rec Master Plan recommendations. There's more limits from the project team. Our goal, from the, our goal in engaging the project team was to engage broad spectrum of older adults to discuss recreation programs and find opportunities to increase seniors' health and wellness, to increase program participation and visits by new older adult users, to get more people into the center and to increase the overall utilization of the center. Our project team is mostly older adults, fifty-five plus, was created in June 2016. They included two board members from the Senior Center Society, Mike Sherlock, President, and Sharon Tate, Secretary, or Shannon Tate, Secretary, Shannon was here today.
With Sharon.
Sharon Tate.
Shannon. Thanks for being open on it.
Uh, we also have eleven other volunteer community members with varying interests and perspectives. And you can see some of their affiliations below. We use the IAPT values in our public participation. And I'll hand over to Shannon to talk about the community, uh, community engagement.
So this slide above shows that the project team was very committed to receiving comments and suggestions from as many people in the community as possible through a very extensive community engagement process. An open house was attended by fifty-seven people, thirty-four of which submitted their feedback regarding the draft project team recommendations. So the numbers here do show that we talked to many, many people in the community and received quite a bit of feedback around this project, which helped to form recommendations. After the open house, the project team presented fifteen of their recommendations to council on April eleventh. Thirteen of the recommendations had broad support from the community and the Senior Center Society. However, there were two recommendations that had resistance from the Senior Center Society Board. They were specific to the programming offered at the center and the name of the center. As a result of the meeting, council directed staff to work with the Senior Center Revitalization Team to amend the Squamish Senior Center Revitalization Recommendations and to reach a consensus specifically regarding the name of the facility and the appropriate activities to be allowed at the center and that the recommended motions be brought back to council for approval.
So with council's direction, on May seventeen, on May seventeenth, we held our project team meeting. Catherine Rockindell facilitated for us. Mike Sherlock and Sharon Tate from the Senior Society Board, Elizabeth Gillis, Jim Gracie, Greg Van Herden and our guest, Mayor Heitzman, all participated in the meeting. Consensus was reached on the center's programming, which was fantastic. And just to add to that, staff also recommended that the center remain available for district sponsored events such as a council meeting. So that it's clear to the public that the council meeting or something else needs to be held there at council's direction. It can still be held there. Name change. Consensus was reached to rename the center. However, consensus was not reached on the name of the center. And from the, uh, from the meeting notes produced by Catherine, there was serious disagreement on the society's proposed name to change the name of the center to the Seniors Activity Center, with only the board's representation supporting the name. So consensus cannot be reached on a name, but three possible options were generated. At the end of the meeting, the Senior Center Society members, representatives were asked to take the three options back to the board for discussion and see if there was any support. We received back from the society that the only supportive of a name change to the Seniors Activity Center. So just some considerations around the name. There were four hundred and thirty-seven surveys completed. Two sixty-eight provided their age in the survey, indicating there was seventy-one percent of those two hundred and sixty-eight were fifty years of old or older. Three hundred and twenty-one responses were received regarding the name change. Sixty-four percent think that the name of the center should be updated. Fifty-one percent say that it should be updated without any age reference. And thirteen percent say it should be updated but maintain an age reference. Name considerations. The open house, twenty-seven comments were received pertaining to the renaming of the center. Six respondents of those comments received prefer the name as is. Twenty-one percent think the name of the center should be updated. Twelve without an age reference, nine with an age reference. Other considerations, keeping senior in the title will deter some of the younger generation of older adults who do not relate to the term senior from using the, from using the center. However, the Senior Center Society Board feels very strongly that it is important to keep the term senior in the title, to make it clear that the center is for older adults.
So option number one for the name of the center and the recommended name being brought forward is the Fifty-Five Seniors Activity Center. So this name is a compromise that is respectful to the intent of the center to be a place for seniors. It also incorporates the society's name suggestion of an activity center and the name addresses some of the concern from a younger generation of older adults who do not want to visit a senior center. The next slide shows a couple of examples and there should be a few more examples in the report. It's kind of an example of what they, what they could look like. Option two for the name as an alternative is the Fifty-Five Hardwired for Seniors. This name is a great fit with the community's branding and is marketable to a younger generation of older adults, which will help to drive visitation to the center. It is a compromise that is respectful to the intent of the center to be a place for seniors. And however, it does not incorporate the society's name suggestion, including Activity Center. Here are a couple of examples, and again, there's more examples in, in the report. Option three for the name of the center as an alternative is the Seniors Activity Center. This name is supported by the Senior Center Society Board and reflects the intent of the center to be a place for seniors. However, the name is difficult to market to a younger generation of older adults and is not supported by the majority of the project team members. An example of what this could look like, and again, there are additional examples in the report.
Uh, Councilor Elliott.
So a question, with the survey responses that came back, most people said to not put an age-related reference in the name change. So does seniors count as an age-related reference?
Seniors would count as an age, yeah, specific.
And so does Fifty-Five count as an age-related reference?
I, I would say it does, yes.
So we're, we're still putting an age-related reference no matter what, even though the majority of the surveys said don't put an age reference in?
Correct. The reason behind that is to try to find some compromise, some consensus that is livable with the Senior Center Society, as well as meet some of the need of what we heard from the community on updating the name.
And if I may, just before you go on, maybe I'll go to Catherine on the spot a little bit. I sat in on that last meeting and there were polar divisions on the name and the goal of the name. And the suggestions that are up there were consensus-driven, although we didn't consensus, get consensus on it. It was, it was a very polar thing. Council went, gave clear directions to say, find some consensus on the name. It wasn't achieved necessarily. There was really good conversation about how the word Fifty-Five could be used in a, a marketing way that we could use as a type of branding thing, but still recognizing that the focus and the, the purpose of the building is for older seniors, for older adults and seniors. So Catherine, maybe you want to elaborate a little bit more on that process that the committee went through?
Absolutely. Thank you, Mayor Heitzman. So first of all, I think it's important to recognize that consensus doesn't mean agreement. It means that we don't, this, and particularly, it was evidenced in, in this, is that we agree, we don't agree on all the details, but we agree to move forward. So what we saw in this meeting is that people definitely were looking at many different ways to try and come up with a solution that met all the requirements, whether it was from the survey, the Senior Center Society, all of the different things. The challenge was that there, it's, they, they basically are in conflict. You cannot do one or the other in terms of, so there, so as the group went through, it became quite obvious after about two hours, that they, they were looking at ways to kind of meld a little bit of both. But you weren't going to get a hundred percent of what the survey said. You weren't going to get, because the project team, which is not just the Senior Center Society, there, there's a, they all had strong opinions about the way forward in terms of what is required. So you have a number of people, all with very strong opinions. And so what they started to look at is how can we bridge this and what might be possible options? So after about two hours, they started to come up with a number of different ideas in terms of what might be possible, but none of them actually met the specific direction of council to say, come to an agreement on one name. And at the end, basically, and you were there, so you, you know, Mary, that they said, well, we're going to have to bring all these ideas forward to council to have them weigh in on this.
Yeah, and I, I do want to make sure that members of the committee are able to add their values to the conversation. So please just put your hand up and join us. And we will intervene, all, all people in the audience, if you're here and you want to ask a question or make a comment.
Yeah, well, you talked, that there is now consensus on programming. And the report seems to imply that programming is very clear that it is a center for adults. Would you agree now with that, programming?
The programming is very clear that it is marketed and programmed for seniors from nine to four and marketed and programmed for adults and seniors from nine to four, nine, or four to nine.
So the marketing we do, the programs we advertise, going to clearly show the community adult oriented and seniors oriented?
Correct.
Can I just elaborate on that, but is it exclusive?
No.
For example, we, we hosted the youth notary parliament there one weekend, for example, which is high school students doing parliamentary debate stuff.
Yeah, so.
It still allows us to do that kind of thing in certain situations?
Correct. So rentals, that would tie into a rental or around a district sponsored event. If it's a rental, it will be marketed for adults and seniors and regular operating hours after four o'clock. And seniors rentals could be adults as well, but marketed towards seniors between the hours of nine to four. Outside of the regular operating hours, as long as there's adult supervision, such as potentially a wedding, such as potentially the youth parliament. If that landed on a Sunday, that would be a good fit. Otherwise, it could be council-directed that, hey, this should be held at the senior center.
But we're not going to program kid taught play.
Correct. So the only children program that will be a program at the center will be intergenerational.
Intergenerational.
Yes. So there, there are also, I, I, I'm sure council understands, but anybody can enter the center. Won't be staff saying, hey, are you under nineteen years of age? Show your ID. But the expectation is.
I'm not showing my ID.
The expectation is, is that if you're under nineteen, that your behavior, you have parental supervision. And of course, there's a cafe present. We don't want to dissuade the public and local residents from coming in, having a coffee and a sandwich.
Uh, Councilor.
Where does the Fifty-Five come from?
The Fifty-Five was generated by the project team as developing some options for council's consideration.
Maybe, I'll ask, maybe Elizabeth will come up to be Fifty-Five. She did a bit of research. No, you have to come to the table, sir. She did a bit of research. Other senior activity seniors use this as a name or use this, Elizabeth, in there, pardon, Alexa?
Yeah. And the reason I ask the question is because when I first looked at it, I thought, well, maybe that's the age person becomes a senior for that. And there's different ages. discount at age 60 and pension 65 and which is sort of retirement, you use the classic. And I thought the senior center membership was 50, not 55, and so I'm kind of wondering where the number comes from or what's the significance of the number?
The 55 is where the marketing will be emphasized. So we also have, there's a couple of things. We have a 55 activity card that if you're over 55, you get discounts for being over 55 and that applies to the senior center and that applies to Brennan Park. The other key one was trying to focus that, not lose sight that this is a center for older adults. And even though after four o'clock, it currently will be marketed for adults and seniors, it is the hope, it is kind of the expectation, I believe, of the project team that as our community grows, that it can be a full-time 55-plus senior center. And this was a compromise in my view of trying to respect the seniors' center board's concerns that if it's take away any sort of seniors title to it, that they see it as the senior center being taken away from them. So we're trying to find some middle ground of having something age-specific that can be marketable to a younger generation of older adults and 55 does seem to fit.
So to be clear, Doug, it was the committee members who came up with the name 55. It was generated as part of the discussion? You asked, like, where did they get from? And we have one of the members here and basically, the group generated the idea. They said, you know, what about this? And that's where the name actually arose. So Elizabeth.
Yeah, I was just, I was bothered first of all that we had this conflict on the name and so I was looking down the web, as I'm sure we all do these days, and looking for names for seniors facilities, senior centers, and there were a few spotted over the country with this word 55 in them. And I thought, well, you know, what is a senior? Like, we talk about the senior center. Is there a definition for senior? You could be a senior in university, you could be two people together and one is senior. Like, really interestingly, what does senior mean? And it just seems that the people that I've spoken to anyway, who are seniors, i.e. people who are probably over the age of, I don't know, 50, 60, 70, have said to me, oh, the senior center, oh, I wouldn't want to go in there. I just don't like the idea of it. And so I thought, well, if we can change the name from seniors, the name of the society is, the name of the place is the first thing you see. And that will either attract you into it or attract you to pay more attention to it or you'll look at it and you'll say, ugh, you know, I don't want to go there. So we came up with this 55 and I brought it up at the meeting and then everybody just started to play around with it and the mayor came up with the concept that Squamish was hardwired for adventure and we thought, oh, 55, play on 55, use the logo, you can really jazz up the name. Anybody looking at it immediately would be encouraged, hopefully, to look into what it was all about. And it also defined the fact that we were actually looking at 55 plus, which I think part of the mission, that our mission was to revitalize the attendance at the seniors committee, at the senior society with respect to that age.
And I realize Sharon and Greg are here too from the committee and I don't know if there's anybody else in the back row, I can't see, but some of the discussion was, how do you communicate those things to that younger senior that they currently now they just shut their brain off? I was talking with a 65-year-old friend and she's like, why would I go to the senior center? Whereas there may be some really good things, but she just clicks her brain off. So how do you communicate with those people? And then Greg was talking about, how do I market the cafe? Give me a term that I can market the cafe and get more people in the door from an economic development point of view. So that was, those were all the considerations while still honoring the idea that this is a seniors' activity center. So it was a very deliberative conversation and please Sharon and Greg, join us if you'd like, that was trying to meet all these needs without excluding anyone, trying to be inclusive. However, the committee was still divided on the landing point. Yeah, come on up, Greg, you got to come up.
But I think that what's not being said is the senior population in Squamish is much larger than the representation of the society and those people don't want to come. So we need to actually get the entire senior population to start using the activity center. It's not just getting the new people, it's the existing seniors who aren't coming.
55 without an age.
Well, and it does sound easy, but the main deterrent of my friends that I talk to that are seniors is they don't want to be deemed as seniors. And it's, I mean...
Certainly at the open house, we also heard, and I think Steph could talk to this too, but we heard from people who actually identified their age, 65 or 70, and said that, you know, part of the issue is, you know, the type of programming and the fact that they don't perceive them, they're active, they're riding their bikes. They actually say, I rode my bike to the senior center to come to this open house. I'm, you know, I'm going skiing, I'm doing this because I'm an active person, but it's the programming and what's being offered and the culture of the place is not reflective of who I am and how I see myself. And they talked about the fact that, many of the people we heard from, that the senior population, whether it's 60 or 65 or 70 plus, is very active, a lot of them in Squamish, and they're keeping themselves healthier. And so they want a place that also represents how they see themselves.
Thanks. And I think one of the things we did at the meeting that I thought Catherine intimated very well is try to get the intention of what? My understanding from the seniors' center society is that the intention is to clearly articulate that this is a center for older adults and seniors, like, this is clear and we don't want to lose that intent. The intention from another perspective was, we want to make sure our name isn't excluding people or turning people's brains off to the possibilities of what the senior center is. So those were the sort of the intentional and then how to get married that in one name was approved to be a very challenging proposition. But certainly, the intentions aren't mutually exclusive and the intention through the program is very clear to the seniors. Very clear to the seniors. Is that a hand?
I'm afraid to start in.
Well, I don't mind the 55.
As, you know, calling, you know, where are you going? I'm going down to the 55 this afternoon. I mean, I don't mind that. It's easier to say that I'm going to the senior center this afternoon. So I can understand older seniors, because I'm a senior, but I don't feel like it. And I tarred with the brush that Patty just said, you know, like, I don't feel like I'm old enough to go to a senior center.
You are.
And I am. So, you know, and I'm just saying that because that's just the way it is and I'm poof. Also, you know, and I looked at the numbers, I mean, it's not like there's a lot of people fighting the fight. And I know seniors can be troublemakers. So I...
And you are proof of that.
Yeah. I mean, you know, the seniors' activity center, it looks good, that's a nice sign. Why not light seniors like this big?
Okay, now we're micromanaging the graphic design process.
Yeah, I mean, I agree that the place should be used more and I think once we're over this name thing and it starts getting used more, everyone's going to be fine. They'll find a different battle to fight. And so I don't know what name to pick for everybody, but I don't mind the 55.
Senior activities.
Senior activities.
Uh, Councilor Spahn.
Yeah, I'm happy to go with whatever name. I think the name is irrelevant to the fact that the programming doesn't reflect our community and that programming can include mountain bike rides and, you know, like more active activities as well as the regular programming and that that would encourage more people to come out. I don't, you know, the name is, yeah, I'm sure there are some people that would say it's a senior center, but if the activity was, if they started attending activities and reflected their lifestyle, then the name would become irrelevant and, you know, I'm happy to go with whatever name.
A Rose Way and the other name.
Yeah, exactly. It's still going to be an adult center for activities and...
It smells good.
Yeah, exactly. And maybe our programming is done with better communication around activities and being like an active community and that would encourage more people to utilize the center. Even if it's a meeting place to go for mountain bike rides or hikes, there's a lot of subgroups of seniors around and maybe that can become more of a meeting place, like the cafe, use of the cafe, it's a social place to meet after.
Yeah, we'll go with Tim and then Doug.
Thank you. There is many excellent recommendations from the project team on it and it's a very active center, outdoor center as well. So we agree that strongly and with the help of an implementation team, it's going to happen.
Excellent. Thank you. Uh, Councilor Reese and Councilor Ellen.
Thanks. Well, you stole my line. I was going to start off with a Rose Way and the other name.
I'm sorry.
And saving that up ever since I read the report yesterday.
I showed my age in that reference, maybe.
Yeah, so, but I think it's true, to be frank. The name means something, but I think the thing that will drive this is the programming. And if it's intended to be for older adults, you're not going to get kids showing up for older adult programming. And if it's intended to be for people who are younger than 70 or 80, they will not show up if the programming is at the higher end of the age scale. So I think that's going to be the thing that drives it and it will be, the programming starts and is marketed and you start trying to get people in there for that programming. To me, that's the thing that solves it. And the name, I agree, almost becomes irrelevant. I mean, we do want to call it something, we want to give it some kind of location, something you can refer to. 55 to me, when I looked at it, just wasn't intuitive. I mean, I just, pick any name, you know, instead of a couple of numbers, it just didn't make any sense to me because of the age of 50 and all the other numbers that are associated with seniors. But if that's the number and if it works and people can start associating with it, fine, but I mean, what about somebody that's 40 or 45 that might be interested in programming? So I think anytime you get into a number or an age like that, you're going to start sort of excluding people and it will just make it more of a challenge. Better to leave them both out maybe and just call Squamish Activity Center or something like that. And if the programming is pointed towards older adults, that's who will show up.
Councilor Ellen.
I'm not sure we're getting closer to consensus on the name, but anyway, I hear what the project team is saying and certainly, my parents are pre-boomer generation, so they're in their late 70s and I'm dead string 80, but they do not call themselves seniors. They're very active. I'm below the boomer generation, but I'm watching that generation because I think they're redefining what aging looks like in many cases. Certainly the ones that are my friends don't consider themselves seniors, even though they're going past 55 now. So to me, the programming is critical. I think the importance of this center for our adult population is about keeping people active and healthy and connected to community. That is what I want the program to do, is to provide a social atmosphere, a gathering place, a place to engage in activities that you're interested in. You know, if you're more artistic, they should offer that in the same way that, you know, I've been advocating for more art programming for my kids because they're not the mountain bikers. They want to do painting and singing. And so we needed to shift in recreation services to start offering programs for kids that were more inclined that way. And in the same way, for our adult population is providing mountain biking for those seniors that are new to town but are skiing and biking and want to be introduced to that in a group setting. So I think we have to contemplate just the wide variety of interests, but more than anything, I want it to be a place that people go and find community. I prefer not to have an age in there. Like Doug said, I'd rather have it say Squamish Activity Center or if we have to have an age, I'd rather say the 55 Hardwired for Health.
I think that just emphasizes the point.
Right. A little musical intro.
It's very hardwired.
I think that, for me, it's the programming and, you know, Brennan Park Recreation Center doesn't say it's for kids, but that's where a lot of the kids go because the programming is so focused on kids. But during adults' winter, there's no kids there because it's for adults. And so to me, it's that piece of the marketing that's critical and...
Can you go back to the logo, the 55 logo suggestion for Steph? Karen, I'm sorry. All right. Are you open?
I'm done.
So the bottom one, and these are not final, these are just to give people an idea. There's a lesser than and greater than symbol on either side of the 55 to sort of communicate that this is a flexible number. And I think when the, and the committee can correct me if I, when we were having that discussion, it's like a vineyard calling their Chardonnay bin, blah, 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 or a restaurant saying, we're the 1857 because that's the address. It's a contemporary way of communicating numbers from a branding point of view. So that's sort of a bit of the thought behind creating something a little bit catchy. The number is really irrelevant, as Councilor Reese pointed out. It just happens to be the number that is the focus of the center, of the society. That's the delineation at this point, is 55. But it was really meant to be more of a branding thing. We talked, I mean, a lot, we know Councilor Pryor said, you know, his little granddaughter's father calls it the scene, you know? We talked about, well, can we call it the scene? How do you spell scene? But it was a matter of sort of finding that thing that you could be a launching point for communicating the programming. And it isn't the end, it really is just trying to create something that has a bit of a vibe to it, is a bit of a communication tool. It's not a steadfast 55, it's just sort of a funky way of saying it.
So to Mayor Heitzman, the actual greater and lesser signs on either side of the lower one actually came from the committee members. So that was a suggestion that the committee members made. There was a lot of discussion, it was very robust around, you know, how to, not just the programming, but the branding and how to attract people and how to make it so that it is more expansive. So certainly, everything he said is correct in terms of a reflection of the conversation.
And although there was still people who just didn't want this or didn't want that, this was the name that everyone kind of went, we can see both sides of this, although we didn't get to consensus. But it was the name that kind of, okay, we got seniors' activity center in there, we got sort of a marketing tool that we could use and that's how it's sort of percolated to the talk, even though I acknowledge there wasn't consensus. Yeah, come on up.
I just want to, I've been in...
Yeah, I'm going to just ask you to maybe pull a chair up, that would be great.
I don't mind.
No, no, it's just the microphones can't pick you up as well if you're standing, that's all.
I forgot what I was going to say.
I'm sorry.
No, I've been in Squamish for two years. I lived in Seashell and Williams Lake previously. Williams Lake is not having a good time right now. But anyway, I'm for calling it the Seniors Activity Center. I think that 55 is really irrelevant. Give you an example, my wife belongs to a group called the Over the Hill Hikers. I don't know if anybody is aware of what they are, it sounds like a bunch of old people. Well, they are old people, you know, from 60 to 86, but their idea of a short hike is four hours uphill. And so I think that the seniors' part is the same sort of thing. And I think, and I agree with the people that say that programming is the number one attraction. If you have the programs that will build, bring people in, if you want younger people... if you want younger people, then maybe you have more lessons on how to do things and encourage 30-year-olds to come. And if it's in the evening, they'll come. You know, 30-year-olds are not gonna come to the event. That's in the daytime. Most of them are working. And even some 55-year-olds are still working.
I know.
And Mr. Gregg and his cafe, I can see that he could use more business. But you know, if the seniors put on a hot dog day or Christmas dinner, they pack that place. So maybe he's gotta do some promoting of the cafe, too. Anyway, I'm still saying the Seniors Activity Center is the way to go. It's exactly what that place is. And the 55 or whatever plus is just confusing. You almost say, oh, I'm not 55 yet, so I can't go there. Whereas if you offer the programs and the advertising, you'll get younger people coming in, too. So that's what I say.
Yeah. Am I just getting your names for our minutes?
Oh, Bob Redford.
Thank you. I...
And I never speak at any...
Well, thank you very much, Bob. The interesting thing about your wife's group is you have over-the-hill tigers. It's communicating two things. And I think that's really important in the name. And so the programming is for over 55. That's the focus, particularly from the Senior Center Society. They don't necessarily want 30-year-old programming here. So it, the key is communicating to that older adult. And that's the fundamental piece to this, is communicate. The problem right now is people think the Senior Center is for 75 and older. And so we need a piece that helps say, it's not for 75 and older, it's for 55 and older. It's just like not on a specific number, but generally speaking. And it communicates exactly what your wife's group, over-the-hill tiger. You're communicating both things in one sentence. And that's...
Hikers.
Oh, I thought you said tiger. No, it's hikers.
So they keep that up.
Chase the name, tiger. But still, okay. My thought was just to make it irrelevant, but that's okay.
I think they almost put it in there, keep people away because it's over the hill. Oh, I'm too good to go to that, you know. That's how old people go there. That's what I thought. I said, you go to the over-the-hill when we moved here. You're probably gonna try it. It was anything but over the hill.
But I think what the purpose of this is to actually communicate to the 55 to 75-year-old age range that this is a center that will help meet your health needs, your activity needs, that kind of thing.
Counselor Shaw.
Maybe, Tim, you can answer this. I was just thinking about the over-the-hill hikers, who I thought, I met them in Mountain Baker. We were running along the peaks and I saw this group of seniors over. It was just, I couldn't believe how far they had gone in a day over all the peaks. It was just fantastic. Which brings me to the point of wondering about transportation as well for the center. And I know it's not to do with the name, but for the programming and everything and access to the activities and ensuring that the center has adequate transportation as well as, you know, that's one of the things that concerns me is we don't have a bus loop there and, you know.
Yeah, I don't wanna get too optimistic because we have boiled this down to the name.
I agree with the Senior Center Activities Center, leaving it.
Or leaving it is the Senior Center.
Right.
Or the Seniors Activity Center. Okay, well, we don't have motion on the floor, but Counselor Elliott.
Okay.
Thank you pretty much, Bob.
I appreciate everyone's input, but I'm also thinking back to the fact that the survey says most people would like no name reference in it and...
No age reference.
No age reference. And I still agree with that. I think the programming is what is critical and how we market it and to those, the people that we market it to. Because by, you know, I did family yoga with my girls. That program could easily be delivered at the Senior Center because there's an adult there with children. And, you know, as soon as you put an age reference in there, it starts to exclude members of the community, even for those intergenerational activities. So I'd rather just have it be an activity center or the gathering place or whatever, but something that doesn't have a name. But the programming speaks about who it's for and when it's for. And that can be clear.
Yeah. I'm gonna counter that a little bit. And I think this is, and I don't wanna speak for the Senior Center Society, but, so please correct me if I get this wrong. But I think there is a potential for erosion of programming if it's too ambiguous. And that we are being very purposeful, not only in the programming, but how we communicate that. And I think the name needs to honor that while still being able to communicate that this is a vibrant place, that this is a contemporary place. So I actually think we, I would like to, that's why I thought this was a good compromise, yet still give some je ne sais quoi to it, is it honors the Senior Activity Center. However, it allows for a bit of a marketing branding push that can bring it a little more contemporary. Come on up. Thanks, Tim.
Thank you.
Sorry, I just wanted to add to that, that I, I'm in agreement with you. I think the name does, I don't think the name's responsibility is to communicate everything. I think there's still gonna be some communication necessary. So intergenerational programs are on offer. I'm 30, I love to go through painting with Mike. So I mean, as long as that's communicated, and I think, again, your programming is critical. If you communicate, these are the programs we have, these are the, who are able to attend, these are the people that we're programming for, then I don't think you can rely on the name to communicate everything.
And just introduce yourself. And you were on the...
Project, Project Team. Yes, Kate Drexler.
Kate.
Yeah. So I mean, I, again, I would like to honor the senior society and say, yep, keep the name in there. It is a senior center. I think that, again, is our intent to maintain the center for older adults and seniors. I like the 55 because, again, it opens it up to what is now considered older adult senior, 55. And again, our programming, as long as it's communicated, I think that you're gonna have the families feel invited, yet still honoring the seniors.
I'm gonna promote on the floor that we've made some upward move that we call the 55's Use Activity Center. Second by unofficially. Just something on the floor to debate instead of just focusing the conversation. This one fails, we'll try something else. Great.
Yeah, I have to disagree that the name does matter. It's, I've been with, involved in this project for two years before it opened. And then it opened. So I've been with the project for quite a while. My friends still ask me, how many people live there? How many people am I feeding every day at the Senior Center? Because they think it's an intermediate care home. Now, that could be in the name, that could be in the marketing, that could be in their own ignorance. But the name does have impact.
Thank you. If I don't see hands, I'm just gonna call the question. Yeah, come on up.
Good evening, there are councilors and all. My name is Donald Byrne and I did email already and sent our opinion on it. But actually, actually hearing it all here, I sort of, one of the things that struck my mind was that the Activity Center, Seniors Activity Center, was voted by us at least three different times. And there were the other times that there was a thing put up and they weren't things. So I think it's actually an insult to the directors of the Senior Center to change it now. And as I said in my email, that, you know, there are things for 55-year-olds and all the rest, but the place was first named the Senior Center. And I think it should still be like that, rather than, you know, deliberately reduce it outside. And the other thing is that as we get, as we get busier, hopefully, and Tim, actually, sort of talked to him a little bit on the way in. And this was for, in addition to the Brennan Park. And of all things that are, you know, with the amount of people that wanna come in and go, according to him, it's essential that you do get that earlier. So that as that happens, there would probably be younger people more would go into the extension to Brennan Park. So that was about it. But I think it's very important that you leave just the Seniors Activity Center. And we can tell people 55 and older aren't. And it's very important, of course, to have the activity thing because I've talked to the girls at desk many times and they're told that, oh, we get people wanting to live here all the time because the seniors, Squamish Seniors Center sort of indicates that to them. But anyhow, hopefully you'll leave it at Seniors Activity Center and...
Well, it's currently Squamish Senior Center, so it's not a, it's currently not a Squamish Seniors Activity Center. It's currently Squamish Senior Center.
Oh, no, I, did I say that? Well, actually, perhaps I, Tommy or whatever.
No, all I'm saying is that...
Now it's, now it's Squamish...
Seniors Center is the current name and we're trying to debate what to change it to.
Yeah.
And the Senior Center Society opinion informs that, absolutely. But there, we did a comprehensive engagement on this and there's lots of things. And it's not meant as an insult to anyone, whatever we land on. And Squamish, sorry, Seniors Activity Center is part of the title of this. That's been currently the motion on the table.
Well, that's very important and we don't need Squamish. Everyone knows Squash.
No, we don't.
It happened to be in there to start with. Anyhow, I hope that you can see it our way and go with it.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you, Bob. Thank you. I'm gonna call a question soon.
So how many years has the center been running?
Since 2000.
2008, nine years, eight years? And I've been in this chair almost six years. And we've been trying to get more people to go there for that length of time. And like Donald just said, when it gets busy and I'm going, something definitely has to change. And so I wish we put as much energy into the name as we would into the programming. But I kinda have a tendency to agree with Karen and then I agree with Ben. So... You know, I'm gonna see that, you know.
It's just thumb wrestle.
So, but now, can you get Activity Recreation Center?
No. The motion on the floor is 55.
Well, I mean, Activity Center will help a bit. But whether that's gonna be enough, I mean, remember, eight years and we're all still trying to make it busier. So what has to change? And we're talking about the name is gonna change this. We're going from Senior Center to Seniors Activity Center. So I don't know. I mean, I hopefully, you know...
Yeah, I'm gonna call the question. I know I've got two people to speak to, about Karen and Elizabeth.
I'm gonna vote against this motion. I am going back to the data we have, which says that when we surveyed the people, most people said they would prefer not to have an age reference in the name. I am listening to some of the older adults that were here, that were on the project team, that said their peers are tripping over the seniors portion of this. It is preventing them from seeing themselves as active members and utilizing this facility, which for eight years has been underutilized. So with no disrespect to our seniors population, I would prefer to see it called the Adult Activity Center. Full stop. Hardwired for Health. And go forward with a programming that specifically protects the seniors' time from 9 to 4 and allows for a broader cross-section of adults outside of those hours. That's where I would go. So I'm not gonna support the motion, Tim.
What was it? And then...
I totally support that statement because in all of the research that we did, I think it was pretty clear that the community just wants a change from the word seniors. They don't want to use the word seniors. So that's my, that is the trouble that I have had in voting for our, for the name so far.
Thank you. Counselor Elliott. Yeah, and this was a compromise, absolutely. We tried to get consensus out of the group. This was the closest to consensus. It is absolutely a compromise on all sides. And that's what we asked the committee to come up with.
Counselor Shaw.
Thanks. Seniors Activity Center and the 55, I like, for the exact same reasons, it was actually Counselor Pryor's comment of like, I'm gonna go with the 55. I like, that number is arbitrary to me. I don't think it reflects, I wouldn't think of it as, you know, like, oh, I have to be 55 to go there. And, but I like the catchiness of having something other than seniors to be able to say, I'm going to 55. I agree with the mayor's comments. And specifically, I think that we have Brennan Park as an adult activity center. There is enough activities for adults to do. The seniors do need a protective space that is senior-oriented, that they feel comfortable in. And it doesn't mean that adults can't go there. I don't feel uncomfortable going there because I'm almost at that age, but not quite. And I don't feel uncomfortable and I like knowing that there's a place that the seniors in my community can have as a protected resource, that if anything ever came to a dispute between programming or a dispute with programming, you can say, no, this is a seniors' space. This is for seniors in our community. And I, I hear all the points and I think that the change in the name, being the 55, would dissuade people from trying to book apartments or get housing in there. And we can still direct them to other things. And I would agree with the points about programming as well. But I think the point, most importantly, is we do need a space for seniors to attend programming.
We have to de-stigmatize the root speakers.
Apparently.
I don't see any more hands. I am gonna call the question on the motion that was up there. All those in favor, opposed. Counselor Kent, Counselor Elliott, Counselor Reese, Counselor Buck, opposed, motion fails. We're gonna, we're gonna go through the exact same thing we went through at the last meeting. We'll have four people against, three people for, four people against, three people for. This was the compromised motion. Counselor Elliott.
So one, one of the fears I heard was that we won't protect this space for seniors. So I'm gonna put forward a motion that that building currently named as former seniors' center, put forward a motion of counsel that that building is protected for our seniors between 1 and 4 with other adult programming. Why wouldn't we put that in a motion and protect that and then deal with the name? So...
Well, I think that is already done. That was done 12 years ago when we formed this, the center.
So why, why is that playing into people's concern about keeping the names, the word seniors in the name? To me, that center is protected through its programming for seniors first. And that frees it up to allow us to change the name. So if people are fearing that we won't be protecting space for senior citizens, then let's put forward a new motion to do that, to reiterate that that is their space. And eventually, once we have a greater seniors' population in Squamish, which our sense of statistics showing is growing faster than our working age population, turn it all back to that program. But in the interim, we don't have that. We don't have the gathering demographics to support that. So if the community feels comfortable with a more recent motion, then let's do that and let's deal with the name.
So I have a couple people, I think the challenge with this is you've got sort of middle ground with the consensus, which was the motion you just failed. You've got people who think it should be just the Seniors Activity Center and you're gonna have people who think taking the whole name seniors out. So we're gonna have a diversity here of where's my own. We're not gonna land anywhere. And counsel needs to show some leadership and land somewhere. Counselor Reese and Counselor Buck.
Thank you. And I think that, just to Counselor Elliott's point, I mean, my understanding is the programming, as Mr. Hoskin mentioned, is, facility is intended for, call them seniors, from 9 to 4 and from 4 to 9 to a broader adult population. And that's part of the recommendations, which I believe we are adopting or have adopted. So that is there. And so I think it is there. So that's the way that center is going to be run, no matter what we call it. So that's the way that center is going to be run, no matter what we call it. That will be the programming. It will protect the programming for certain people at certain times. So I take the point that the name is relevant, but, but what name is almost irrelevant. You've got to have some name. And I like the Adult Activity Center, 55. We only call this 55. It's just not intuitive to me for ages, but seniors is actually almost a vague and misleading term. When you think of the different things that qualify as senior, the discounts we give at age 50, for example, a different discount at age 60, 65, 70, and I'm like Counselor Pryor, I don't think of myself as a senior at all unless someone's offering me a discount.
At least you're honest.
So, so I think, I think the word seniors actually is becoming the problem, and the survey tells us that, but population, the broad part of the population is telling us that. So let's take it out.
Counsel.
And I'll put the motion forward. We call it the 55 Adult Activity Center.
Well, by Counselor Elliott's side, I think I said, Counselor Buckner, more for the council.
Just to add to the fact that, you know, I think the fact that, you know, what we're doing now isn't working, so I think any change is going to be good for sure. But also to reflect on the fact that we have major population growth happening in our community, and a lot of it is actually going to take place downtown. So I think having this facility that is underutilized at the moment be more available in evening hours especially, I think that will be very, very helpful. And it's important for people to have access to, you know, space like this within walking distance, it's really sort of an encouragement for the community.
Counselor Kent.
Yeah, I think, like Karen says, and I think like we all agree on that the program is everything. As somebody who just turned 60, the term senior is an epithet. So I hardly agree with Doug as the adult activity center.
Okay. I don't see any more hands. I'm going to call the question on the motion, which is essentially the motion above, but take out the word seniors and put in the word adult activity center, correct? No more hands? Counselor Pryor?
I was just going to call.
Okay, I'll call the question. All those in favor, opposed, she carries. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you.
Let's get it going. I'm going to move, oh, we're going to recess now, um, let's say 20 after 1:00. Thank you. Welcome, everyone.
One channel and then.
Counselor. Uh, welcome, everyone, to the committee of the whole meeting. We are actually midway through our agenda, and next up is the Geribaldi Springs Golf Course Development, OCP Amendment and Zoning Amendment Bylaw. Just before I go to staff, I do have two people that actually were very good and filled out an application with peers, so I will call on them first, and that's Wayne Press and Bill Kavanaugh. But if you would like to speak, we try to make these committees collaborative. There's a lot of you, so if you are within a group and you have a spokesperson, that'd be great. If people start to get a little redundant in their comments, I mean, cut it off. This is a preliminary committee of the whole. It's not public hearing per se, but we do try to be inclusive in these committees. So if that's settled, I'll pass it over to you.
Thank you, Chair, and I will pass it on to Susan Stratus, who's our contract planner, who's reviewing this application on behalf of this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Again, we have a very brief presentation today. The purpose of our meeting is to briefly look at the issues that were raised by council at the May 23 Committee of the Whole, which is questions about the history of previous development approvals and the previous habitat compensation approvals. That was our purpose. Since I developed this report and put it on the agenda, the applicants have come in with a new development concept, but the agenda had already been prepared, so they are here to speak briefly to the new direction they're taking. So the lands we're looking at, just a refresher, 48.3 hectares, which is the previous golf course site on the east side of Tantalus Road. To the north is Doward Drive and Newport Ridge Drive. To the south, adjacent, we've got the hotel, commercial and townhouse uses on Tantalus Road, and single residential units to the north and south. The process to date, it started in June with the applicant appearing informally at the Community Development Committee meeting, and then having early open houses in June and July of 2016. That was prior to the applications coming into the district. In July of that year, July 28, the OCP Amendment application was submitted. The preliminary bio-inventory was submitted in August, and then finally the zoning application was submitted in November. The only reports that have come forward so far have been the May 23 Committee of the Whole, where we reviewed the concept plan, which at that time involved 461 units. The OCP, the subject property is designated Greenway Corridors and Recreation in the OCP. The surrounding areas and one small corner of the north part of the site are designated residential neighborhood in the OCP. The zoning is CD 12, which is a zone applied to the golf course and adjacent lands on Tantalus Drive, except for a small RS1 portion in the northeast corner of the site. So the development applications history that we were asked to look at goes back to 1994 or even prior to that. In 1989, there was an OCP amendment from, for Newport Ridge developments to go from residential and limited use to recreation, open space and commercial. And I think that is important because there was originally a residential designation on part of this property. In 1994, the OCP was amended from residential and limited use to recreation, open space, which was applied to this site. In 1995, the zoning was changed. It was changed from residential one and rural two to CD 12, following up on the OCP amendment. So CD 12 is the zone that has been in place since 1995. In 1998, the district adopted a new OCP, and the term greenways was then used. In 2012, the CD 12 zone was revised to permit some additional uses on the golf course and to slightly revise the density on the Tantalus Road sites. 2002, the OCP was amended again from residential to greenways for a north portion of the site, basically, and the rezoning was also done at the same time, the golf course was expanded northwards. In 2004, the DP was issued for the resort hotel and golf course. And in 2004, there was also an OCP amendment north of the site in the Doward Road area from limited use to residential neighborhood and a corresponding zoning application. Moving on to more recent years, in 2005, there was another zoning amendment for the galleries' site on Tantalus Road, which had previously been just commercial, and it was amended to allow for mixed residential and commercial uses. 2005, there was a proposed rezoning for a north portion of the site, 3.13 acres, from CD 12 to RS1, and a corresponding OCP application, for some reason, came in two years later. 2009, there was an OCP amendment for the 2.61 acre corner that the arrow points to from greenways to residential, and a rezoning from CD 12 to RS1. And council raised the issue at the last meeting about the covenant for an amenity payment, and, and the report that you have today that confirms that that covenant is in place, and a $469,000 amenity payment is required with a clause to increase that amount over time. So that still is on, in place on the property.
And just payable when?
Sorry, payable at the time of final subdivision approval. So there has been no subdivision on that property. That property is not a separate lot. It was rezoned without creating a lot, and at the time, there was no way of getting servicing or access in. So it was actually unusual that it was rezoned without those things being resolved. So it has just sat there since that time as an RS1 zone site, and that covenant is still in place. In 2011, there was a proposal at the south end of the site, Newport Ridge, it was called for a small lot development, and it was accompanied with an OCP amendment request for greenways to residential neighborhood. That didn't proceed.
And that's that purple area?
At the south, the bulge, yes.
Oh, the bulge, not the purple area?
Yes, that's right.
That was the best data for person.
Okay.
In 2016, that brings us up to date with the current application for Geribaldi Springs. And I'll just quickly show a couple of maps of those previous applications that I mentioned. This is what the 1989 OCP looked like, and if I have any luck getting the, I'm going to get Youngs to do that, this is particular skill. The, these designations didn't cover the whole site. The bottom was recreation, open space. To the left along Tantalus was commercial, and the north part of the sites seemed to be residential. And again, some of the old maps, you know, they're a bit vague as to exactly where the lines are.
The residential's pointing to the small-
Oh, yeah, sorry, no, I didn't see that. Okay, so the entire Geribaldi Springs property, which is smaller than it is today, is, in 1989, was recreation, open space. And this is the original CD zoning. Parcel A, the large parcel, is the golf course, which also allows for driving range, fairway and park use. Parcel B is the hotel site. Parcels C and D are the low-rise townhouse sites. Parcels E and F are a mix of commercial, retail and apartment uses. And parcel G, which are the district-owned lands, are basically the compensation areas that were put in place at the time for habitat protection and 900 parking spaces for some reason. In 2002, this is the extension that took place, both as an OCP and CD zone extension to the north of the, what we know as the, as the golf course site, so it expanded northwards in 2002. The Doward area further north of that was rezoned in 2004 and '05, and the OCP was changed at that time from limited use to residential neighborhood. This is just for context. It's not, it doesn't, it's not affecting the golf course site. The 2009, what, OCP and zoning amendment that includes the amenity contribution is just shown with an arrow there, a bit more of a close-up on that. So moving on to the original environmental approvals, the issue was raised at the last meeting as to whether the golf course was intended to be compensation for the, for the development on Tantalus Road of housing and commercial uses. And so I looked and I was, obtained copies of the original environmental assessments, and they were evaluated separately. The Tantalus Road site provided its own compensation area, which is the areas we looked at that are now district-owned, and the golf course had a completely separate evaluation, and it provided its own habitat compensation plan for the impacts of the golf course development. And that actually included a small area of off-site compensation. The district has this air photo on their wall showing the golf course shortly after it was developed, and I guess, you know, one of the things to point out is that there was a great deal of site alteration took place during that golf course development. It's probably greened up a lot more now because it hasn't been used for anything, and vegetation grows quickly, but it was a fairly heavily altered site at that time. Just looking at the numbers, the graph on the left shows you the golf course site, and this was in 2002. There was a fair bit of pre-habitat development. The box below the graph here in blue is the amount of lost habitat. So this is the amount that was lost on the golf course site, and of course, it had to be compensated both onsite and offsite. And I guess those are the basic rules. It's in, with any lost habitat, you have to compensate it. The development sites on Tantalus Road, being smaller, had a lesser amount of habitat loss, which is this blue box here. But they were both evaluated and compensated separately, so the golf course is not providing compensation for the Tantalus Road development. This graph compares the 2002 habitat loss and gains, and I would just point out that in 2002, there was less potential loss, and what we're showing for 2016 looks actually to be a fair amount of habitat loss, but this is from the original development plan that the developer has submitted. And as of today, unfortunately, I don't have the numbers today, that amount of habitat loss is quite, quite a bit smaller. So the original application they submitted to us did show a fair bit of habitat loss, but of course, it's compensated, and you end up with a habitat, a net habitat gain, and that's a legislative requirement. So I'm keeping my part fairly brief, but I did want to mention that the next steps, depending on council's pleasure, once the applicants have shown the next, the updated site plan, is that the staff would normally prepare the bylaws, the OCP and zoning amendment bylaws. We have been working on them, and it is possible to bring them forward to a committee meeting, or pardon me, a council meeting in late July. So I'm going to just leave that open to see how, what the, how the meeting goes today. We are also recommending that the applicants proceed to an additional open house in late July. There's a great deal of interest in the community in this project and a certain amount of misunderstanding of the project. So I think it is really important that they proceed to another open house fairly quickly. And if the first two steps take place, it would be possible for us to come back in September for second reading and then get to a formal public hearing. But I think out of the items on the list, the open house in late July is particularly important. Just to note that the public input has actually been kind of rolling in in the last day or two fairly quickly, so I wasn't able to put that in the staff report in front of you. In May, there was a summary of the early input at the Committee of the Whole meeting, and I would say at that time, the comments were largely fairly negative, both about the site and about traffic and other concerns in the broader neighborhood. As of today, the, we have received quite a few other emails and letters in support of the project. I would say at least six, possibly a couple more, and we've also received additional responses that, again, are still concerned with traffic, environmental protection, and people are looking for more information on the proposed type of houses. And just to acknowledge that there is a petition, I believe council was aware of it, against the rezoning and OCP amendments. So that concludes my part of the presentation.
Thanks. Before we move on, I'll see if there's any questions for Susan and Youngs. I don't see any hands. The proponent was going to come and present new plans, correct?
Yes, that's right.
Great. And I'll just ask if you introduce yourself and if you either work for Polygon or consult with Polygon, just out of line, what your role might be.
Okay.
So Mike Nelson of Cascade Environmental.
I'm Kevin Chinaker, Polygon Homes.
Great to let you come in from ROA Architects.
And I'm Bruce Hemstock from PWL Partnership, Boarded Linescape Architects.
Sorry, just one second. So I'll start talking here. We have a lot of people sitting here, but we're planning on being very, very brief. We appreciate the opportunity to come back, and we've been working pretty feverishly on this in the last month and a half, since we last appeared. There we go. One more thing I want to do. Sorry. Okay. So like I say, we'll be very brief. I'm just going to quickly talk about the major changes that we made in the overall master plan, and then each of these gentlemen will talk to their specific disciplines and get into a bit more detail. So, so one of the major- So, one of the major things that we recognized from the last meeting and talking to streetkeepers and other folks afterwards was, it became obvious that the green space was quite divided. It was kind of divided into four quadrants. Lot A divided in east-west, and the road that we're proposing connecting A and B was divided in north-south. So the first thing that we looked at was, how can we get rid of that road? And working with Mike and the hotel and the restaurant and whatnot, we thought of a solution that, excuse me, that we can connect using a current car path at the very eastern edge of the site. It actually works better for a lot of reasons. It's less environmentally impactful. We're not going through... We worked partially on a car path in the old plan. This is wholly on a car path. The crossings are already established, and Mike will speak briefly to that. And it also isn't coming in in front of the hotel any longer. It takes that traffic right away from the viewscape of the hotel. It requires, however, for us to have a secondary emergency access to the upper lots. And the way that's being achieved is a four-meter-wide path that will serve a dual purpose as an emergency access. So only fire trucks or emergency vehicles will ever use that. There will be ballers to both ends, and it's four meters wide, so it would never be converted to any other use. It's strictly an emergency access, giving the two ways in and out of lots, B and C. The other thing that was noted was, again, from the hotel, the restaurant, pretty much everyone, is that we were too close to the hotel and it affected the viewscape and the hub in that location. So we relocated what we had there, we got rid of the community building that we had there altogether, and opened that up quite a bit. And we'll be able to plant out, and if you're out on the site, you'll see that that lot A will be completely hidden by the way the trees will grow off in front of it. At the same time that we did that, we also got rid of the apartment buildings that were in that location as well. So, through working with staff, my understanding is, is the way that it may work if everything were to proceed was that the OCP amendment would apply to the yellow areas only, only to the residential areas, and the remaining site would remain under the current designation. And just to give you some numbers here, so the development area has been reduced by 32% from 49 acres to 34. The park area has been increased by 23% from 69 acres to 85 acres. And the total number of homes has gone from 461 homes to 370 homes. So I'll let Mike talk a little bit about the habitat balance.
Okay, very briefly, the bylaw inventory has been completed. Repairing areas have been assessed and surveyed. And all of the development pods will occur on areas that are previously disturbed, primarily golf course, airways, et cetera. Areas that, within the golf course area, are disturbed, that won't be developed, will either be replanted as repairing habitat, will be enhanced through things such as wetlands, or they'll be left as open green space. Kevin's already mentioned the movement off the road. That's quite a very significant environmental feature in that it was very close to New Creek. It also divided the central wetland, fragmented habitat. Moving it to the east solves a lot of those problems and provides a very open, continuous green space. There's still wildlife movement concerns, and we'll be looking at features on the roads such as wildlife passage, culverts, et cetera, especially for small mammals and Vivian passage, that sort of thing. As Susan mentioned before, the previous version, we completed the habitat balance, and there was a net increase in that previous version. This version, I have not finished the habitat balance yet as of this meeting, but there's less development than the previous one. So I'm pretty confident the net gain should be even more than it was for the previous version.
Good afternoon. What I'd like to do is just spend a couple of moments talking about the first phase of development. It's what we call Lot C, which is a northerly development parcel. As you can see, Dewar is above us, and the single-family lots between us and our site. This was the original scheme that we had submitted. That was primarily three stories in height. The townhouses were three stories in height. They were attached of generally four, six and some eight unit buildings. The site was fully developed, you could see to the upper left-hand side, and it contained 91 units at the time. So we have spent a fair bit of time looking now at what the changes could be. And there's two benches on the site. Is the upper right-hand corner is a bench that is roughly three to four meters lower than the adjoining houses, 10 to 14, 15. And then in the center of the site is another substantial grade change of above 45 meters that carries along the site to the center, and that provides another development bench then to the south, as you can see there. So, the change that we had is looking at the grades. We really wanted to work with the grades of the house, of the site, working with the houses. And looking at access. So, the applicant has purchased another piece of property so that we have a pedestrian path connection right to Dewar on the upper left-hand side. And that'll form a continuation pedestrian spine that goes through our site, that's used by the community and for the development itself. The setback for the houses from 10 to 15 is more than what the RS1 requires, plus we have a three-to-four meter grade change. We are lower than the existing houses to the north of us.
Actually, we're not actually lower in that location. Is it a little closer?
It's close at 15, and then it slopes down towards 10. The change that we have here now, we're all two-story homes. We reduced it from three to two-story homes adjacent to the northerly neighbors, but also to the southerly neighbors, where we had three-story homes. And we set it back from the bank. The bank on the south side is about 15 to 18 meters lower. It's a steep incline. But we have two-story homes on fronting both sides of our neighboring homes. Okay, that one here, okay, the major change we were looking here is the relationship to the existing houses to the north. This quadrant shows that we're all detached homes. There aren't any attached homes. There are, get to the variety that we have, but they're two stories in height to be similar to the existing homes. So that is a quadrant that is broken up into little courtyards of a variety of different unit types. The unit types that we have, we can see there's some one-and-a-half story, which is a wider module. There are some narrow homes that are two stories with an attached garage, and some have double-car garages. All homes will have two cars. And what we've done is the homes which are fronting or backing onto the existing homes, 10 to 15, they are running perpendicular, so we have view corridors between the buildings, so we don't build as wall as we had previously. And then the ones further south is around the courtyard area itself. Along with this walkway that we have coming through our site, we have reduced the amount of the length of the road of the lower bench, so that we can have a community green amenity space that is part of that walkway. And we have less impact to the joining homes 1 to 6, which where our site really flattens out and would have more impact to the homes adjacent to us. We're also looking at the possibility of having a home daycare that could happen in the noted areas where these homes would be adjacent to this open space. So we could, if there's an opportunity, actually thinking of those homes could have a small home daycare. Affordability, we're looking at a number of options. We could look at a building that we have there, or it could be interspersed throughout the site in a variety of locations. So we really haven't reconciled which is preferred, but we're looking at the options of both ways. So, with these changes, I guess the big change was we reduced the density by 31 homes. Where before, we had 91, and now we have proposing 60 homes in this quadrant.
You can just go back, because, just, sorry, thank you. Just want to clarify. Let's go back to the...
The triangle, that's right.
It's the arrow that goes to that one.
Arrow popping.
Because there's two different zones on that whole area. One is already zone RS1, correct? Where you have the single-family home.
Sorry.
And the big tongue is zone Greenway. Is that correct?
Yes, that's right. The top part of the triangle over to the right, Kevin, is RS1, and the remainder is actually CD12. So if we were to follow up in the new zone, we would rezone both the RS1 portion and the CD12 portion into a new zone.
Into one whole new zone?
Yes, yes.
Maybe to further explain that, that would be the one townhome community, but the building forward would be single-family for that part of the site. And that way, we can control landscaping.
Well, it's okay, you can start with that, because I'm here to give an update on where we are with park open space. I think, as we heard a little bit earlier, we've increased the open space area. We've got about 85 acres at this point, which is quite a significant increase in the district of quality. Actually, anywhere, 85 acres would be a significant increase in park space. And as with some of the previous schemes, it does include an event hub and trails. At this point, I think where we are is, as it relates to design, is working, is thinking that the best approach for that would be to work with district staff and the public to actually define those park spaces. Notwithstanding that, I think it's important to note that an event hub is something that's key, and that is that area, areas, the red dot by the hotel and the existing plaza. There's a lot of interest in that space being an event hub. It's currently being used as an event hub with scheduled events going on as we speak. So it makes sense that that would be the first place that would be created in the park space to formalize that and make it something that is open to everyone and a basis that is acceptable to all the owners and everyone that's involved in the property. The other key thing is, there are a lot of trails. There's a trail network, a fine-grained trail network that takes you from the event hub out to the existing trails to the east. There's a hierarchy of trails ranging from that three-and-a-half meter multi-use trail to the 1.8 meter trail and a two-and-a-half meter trail, and they're noted in color there. It's important to note, too, that the access to the trail network is all fully disabled, accessible. And the addition of washrooms and whitewash station in the star is something that we've added in, and that's at the event hub. The other thing that's been added is parking. And we had a little bit of parking before. Expanded that out at the event hub, taking advantage of the work yard, which is down in the lower right-hand corner, and expanded parking in that location as well. So that's where we sit at this point with the park open space.
That's it.
Thank you. Any questions for application purposes for proponent?
Well, it's more of a question for staff. Given that that section in the northeast corner has that covenant on it with respect to the amenity, if this is rezoned, how would that be dealt with? Assuming that proposal went ahead, how would the amenities be assessed?
Through the chair, we haven't got through, we haven't got to that stage yet because this is fairly new to us, but I think the original intent was to look at what CACs are payable under the district's interim policy and take a look at that commitment and see how those line up. I think you're in the $3 million range under the current CAC policy. But I'm guessing what we would end up doing is there will be a package coming forward from the developer consisting of the CAC payments, affordable housing, which we haven't talked about today, and the park upgrades, kind of a basic package. And all of those things have a value. And we may end up rescinding that covenant, provide it gets compensated in the new CAC formula that council.
Yeah, just following up on that, was, the framework probably does a specific amenity attached to it.
Corridor trail.
The corridor trail. Is that explicit in the covenant?
Yes, it is. And, again, we would have to rescind the covenant in its entirety if that's the direction council wants to go. And I think when we come forward to the next council meeting, bylaws and a more detailed analysis of what has just been presented, we'll be looking at the whole CAC package. You know, I don't, I actually forgot the letter yet from the applicant, so I can't speak to too much detail. But that's the intent, is to look at the entirety of the package, what the developer has said so far, as they intend to build affordable housing units on the site and meet the CAC policy payments. So, it looks initially like they will be in excess of what the district would typically get on the floor they want put in place. But I need to wait till I get the formal letter from the applicant, which hasn't been coming out yet.
Okay, Councilor Ellie.
Thank you. So, moving a road to the east, my opinion is, is more of a question of view. There's quite steep slopes there, so that land above it drains, I would imagine, into that area. So how do we keep connectivity with some of that drainage if there's a road there? Like, because there's wetlands on the other side of that. There used to be sort of creeks that ran.
Yeah, the road would be...
Yeah, please.
The road would be right at the base of the place, so it couldn't go actually right on the property line, we'd say, because of terrain. It's fairly rocky right there. There is two bridge crossings there right now. Those bridge crossings obviously have to be expanded to come near the road from a two-and-a-half meter wide trail. And then we provide cross drainage and animal passage holes as well to that area. The road has not been designed yet, so...
No, no, I get it. And just to put a fine point on it, the current path is a four-meter right-of-way, and would it be a six-meter road?
The current car path? Current car path would be, I'd be guessing, to say, two, two-and-a-half meters wide.
Okay, but the road would be at least six, I see.
We're proposing six, and we're looking at a road that was built up by UDC as a study road, where it's very narrow, very low, and not in that, so I'll get it done with the staff.
Can you continue? I know this is more toward ADP, but can you speak to the forms of housing for the southern portion that you're considering? Is it all townhomes there? Are you doing some of the same sort of treatments?
Okay, to the chair. Yeah, I think that that Lot C will serve as a template for what we're looking at. And that's our, you know, we've spent a lot of time thinking about that site, and there will be more time spent on it as we decide what exactly the affordable housing units look like and the mix. You know, we're learning from the project that we're already building, you know, what people are looking for. We'll learn some more when we do this site, and then we'll apply that to the southern sites. But they are primarily, they are townhomes, but there will be a wide variety.
So I grabbed this yesterday off the counter, which I understand is that I'm going to the ADP, and talks about municipal roads and strata roads. And for example, the one that comes off the top of Dowlett Drive and goes down the property line to get to Lot B is shown as a municipal road. So that would be dedicated to the municipality.
Just so you know, Kevin, I can't see that.
Oh, okay. Well, I tried to get the arrow work in here, and it, I'll get it back.
Well, it's the one that comes off in the very northeast corner of the property, comes off Dowlett Drive, and goes down and services Lot B, which is the one that's centered, this one.
I think I know what you're talking about, but just so you know, your point, I'm sorry. We're looking that way, so.
And then, it's distinguished by a road that's called the strata road that goes from Lot B down to the more or less opposite of the hotel site, Lot A's. And I just want to be clear, I mean, I understand between the municipal road and the strata road, there's different sizes. There's also typically different maintenance obligations. I take it with the strata, it is proposed that that would then be maintained by those developments? Would they be open to the public? They wouldn't?
Yeah. And just to further answer that question, the road, like you suggested, from Dowlett down into Lot B that ends in the cul-de-sac, we wanted to study whether it could be a municipal road, but that's still being evaluated by staff as to whether they want it as municipal or strata. It could be either or. It could be either or, but beyond that, it is strata road, and it would be maintained. And we've got quite a bit of experience on the structure of that, but it's maintained by the strata.
But in any case, public?
Full, accessible, yeah. Yeah, there's a right-of-way that goes over top of it, as it would be for some of the paths that go through and interweave that aren't on district land. The same right-of-way would apply, so they're publicly accessible.
Thank you, Counselor Chappell. Thank you. The green space and the trails, you had just mentioned a little bit about who's responsible for the maintenance of?
The dedicated land would be maintained by the district.
Which is the trade of the green space?
Pardon me?
The green space of park, right?
Yes, correct.
So 85 acres of park would be dedicated back to the district?
That's correct.
And I think, yeah, I think where you're driving at that is if it becomes a park, there's a cost associated.
Yes, exactly. I need assessment of the maintenance cost to our tax period.
Very much. Could be dependent on the programming of that park, so we need to do that analysis. Thank you. Any more questions from council? Yes, I think that's a question, yeah.
Well, we didn't get down into, I appreciate the explanation about Lot C at the top. Lot B, if you could just refresh my memory about what type of housing was proposed or is still, continue to be proposed, as well as for A and then the one down the very block, there's, I guess it's A, A2.
Maybe you can go through all the other plots in terms of what's the intended housing form?
Sure. So if we start at the lot, the nature of that site is it's quite a steep sloping site as it goes from the east to the west. So in the area that's steeply sloping, it'll be primarily duplexes, or what we call a downhill duplex, because we're dealing with topography, right? So we're going to have to break up the building blocks significantly. So you would walk in at the ground floor, your garage is on the late ground floor, and your bedroom and whatnot, and then there would be a walkout basement, but it's actually a walkout. That would, that can vary, and it can vary in size, but that's roughly the idea. And then when you get to the flat, that would be looking at primarily a three-story, probably downhill, blocks of, you know, four on average, probably not getting much bigger than that just because of the shape. And then where you get into smaller areas, ends of roads, you end up with twos, threes. And there could be a mix of smaller units depending on what we work out of the affordable units. We've been looking at different ways of having a small unit on the end of a block that is the affordable unit, so there would be that mix. And then as you get further down to the Lot As, and this one I'm about to say would apply to all of those because they're all on the flat, those would be a mix of, we would prefer to primarily do three-story, those are the most affordable type, but it's going to be dictated by the market and what happens up north. And once we get in there, we, as a builder, would prefer to remain flexible to see what people are looking for, because these will come in as a DP one by one, but it will be, like I mentioned, townhomes. And we are, we are thinking we'd like to do primarily three-story down there, two-story to break up blocks, or if it's adjacent in certain areas, but that's the main idea.
Just the last question on that point. The previous proposal, I think, showed Phase One being the Lot As.
Correct.
I believe I heard somebody say that Lot C is now Phase One.
Correct.
Could you go through the phasing?
Yeah, so basically, there's a couple reasons why Lot C makes sense to be the first phase. One of the main ones is that Lot, the Lot As are all in the, in bad soil and floodplain, not as good a soil. And just in terms of site disturbance and moving things around, we're going to be mining up on Lots B and C, blasting out rock, excavating, and then we're going to want to put it somewhere. So we would put it down on Lot A. So we can do it all internally on the site. If we do it the other way around, we would be importing a lot of soil from somewhere to do the lower lots, and then we would have to get rid of a bunch of soil when we get up to the upper lots. So just on that point alone, there's a lot more trucking, disturbance and whatnot. Lot C, we've already been working with Skyridge to the north of us, the builder there, to upgrade that water station. We bought that house at the end, and we've been working with engineering. So the services are there, long story short. Everything's there and ready to go. The road dedication's already coming in off of Doward, off the Skyridge development. So it's, it's much more ready than the other ones are. The other ones need quite a bit more. I mean, we've figured out the engineering to a pretty high level, actually, but we're not, you know, the services just aren't there yet. So we'd rather tee off of what's up top and bring it down than to come in overland and bring in new services to an area that's completely undeveloped, we'd rather work our way down. So those are the two main reasons.
Thank you. Count, if you have any questions? I don't see any. Is that the end of the questions? So I'll just go to, two people put up their hands in, but I just reiterate, it's open to conversation for anybody. I'll start off with Bill Kavanaugh and then Dwayne Crass. Thank you. And you can either go to the podium, or if there's a chair at the table, please join us at the table.
My name is Bill Kavanaugh. I live at 1212 Main Street in Squamish. I'm addressing the mayor, council and staff as the president of the Strata Corporation Council, as well as president of the owners group, who own and manage the Hotel Novus Executive Suites in town. I've been advised by our council and by our owners group to represent our hotel and support Polygon in their efforts to develop properties surrounding our hotel. I did send along a letter in support to the council dated June 7th, on behalf of both the council and owners group. With the assistance of Polygon along with the hotel, we sponsored this. This would not have taken place had Polygon not used their magic lawn mowers and weed whackers to get rid of the foul ground.
And just for people who can't see the picture, it's a mountain by crazy.
That had been allowed to grow since a previous owner vacated property. This development, because that's the hub that was just referred to, this development right next to the hotel will improve our customer experience. Right now, our customers are landlocked because they can't use that property because of privacy. If we open the hub and the development of the green spaces outlined by Polygon, it will directly improve our customer experience and also hopefully bring more customers to our hotel, that's from the green point of view, and also more people that can stay longer in Squamish. Right now, we have about 7% of our visitors stay one night. We would like to escalate that to 20 to 22% by using our relationship with the gondola and with the development that's coming forward from Polygon. If our people are allowed to get away from the hotel by just walking over a paved area into a green space, they will stay longer. I am sure over time that the parkland will be used by many of our customers, but also by residents of Squamish, who will be using the trails, the bike paths, and be able to enjoy them year-round. The full-page advertisement that appeared in the chief, and everybody remembers this one from last week, that to me commits Polygon to Squamish. I know as a result of what I've seen across the street from Brennan Park, the workmanship on their homes is extremely good, and the finishes inside were first class. Now, as the, commonly referred to as the refuse manager king of Squamish, I have never seen such a clean building site.
That's so conointed, by the way.
Thank you, Captain. Thanks, I thought it was. I've never seen such a clean work site. Now, I travel over to Brennan Park three times a week for AquaFit, and I've never once seen anything on that site that's not property managed as refuse. In closing, I've had an opportunity to walk through all of the area that Polygon has built and find it extremely refreshing to see a builder with this kind of commitment. I thank the mayor and council and members of staff for allowing me to speak and support the development. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mr. Crass? And then just put your hand up if you'd like to speak as well, let me know.
Hello, I'm Dwayne Crass. I am part of the organizing committee, Squamish Mountain Bike Festival Society, that hosted the Sparkus 50 Mountain Bike Race, the picture that was presented. Briefly, I just want to say that the original endeavor of taking on a mountain bike event was predicated on having a unique event space such as this one here, where it was not isolated by two provincial highways and had direct access to the trails, both for the start and for the finish, creating a highly unique experience for the end user. I think in its first year, we've done extremely well. We sold out about a week to go. I do have plans on expanding the event for 2018, and I'm about ready to announce soon. It would be quite costly and maybe something that I wouldn't take on if I did not have access to those trails that were not separated by rivers or provincial highways. It just, it just makes it such an incredibly expensive event to put on that way, and I need higher numbers than what I'm starting at now. That's mainly just what I want to say, and that's a unique space.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to join in the conversation? Or you're here and then you, yeah, you, yeah, one up.
We're just having coffee there, but.
Thank you.
Thanks for your time, Counsel, and Chair. Thanks for your correspondence over the last several weeks on this. I just summarized the development units.
Just tell me, introduce yourself to the.
Sorry, Adam Smith, and representing a group of owners from Skyridge, Rockridge, mostly affected by Lot C there, as well as involved with the petition that was mentioned. That's about 900 people now. So when this goes to reading, I guess we present formally what we have, Squamish residents, not just farmed-out signatures. So there is a lot of interest in the community, and I know everyone's well aware of that. So I did summarize from the district's development showcase, all the units, housing units that are in the pipeline currently, and these do include some of the phased developments coming up, which are 10 to 15-year build-out. Does not obviously include all the things that will come onboard each and every year from now until that point. So the developers' numbers were, you know, we need to reach 14,000 units, this is coming, we need to be ready, this, this project accomplishes that. We already have over 6,300 units in the pipeline, which at 2.2 residents per unit is the standard, is, is over 14,000 units. So this is not solving any housing crisis. This does bring some good things to the community, park space, a hub, mountain bike races, we're all, we all live here, that's all part of what we're into, but what's the cost of that? What is, what is the cost to the residents that live at the top? You know, we heard from the hotel, who's, who's in support, some of the members of the townhouses are in support, but what is the cost in maintaining that space that is, yes, being gifted, but, you know, we don't know those numbers yet. So I'd really like to hear what that costs to taxpayer. What is the cost to make this, make this project happen to the taxpayer? I know that, that, you know, it brings revenue in, it changes this land use, like, is an OCP change worth what's proposed here? Would this be, if planning wasn't given this piece of land, is this, and it said, here's the project, where can we put this? Would we even be, would this even be a notion on this piece of land? The fact that someone owns it doesn't mean we need to do something with it. Zoning protected by the OCP, as we're all aware of, and I don't know what the answer is on the, on the tangent of good neighbors, what do you say to the people up top that get something that they bought, which is a protected, OCP-protected piece of zoning? That's not overly neighborly. Sponsoring a race is neighborly, so that's great. Where was all of this when Seven Peaks went in? It was just another development. It was supposed to be an area that had housing and it got housing, and not just by Polygon, but by other developers, and I'm sure council paved the way for that, because it was supposed to be housing. It was near our rec center, it was close to downtown, so it's a whole different animal. I don't see protection of green space by building on it and gifting what you can't build on back to district is really great protection. Points on the OCP about safe travel to schools, we've got one-lane roads proposed where opposing vehicles, when they meet each other, would fear into bike lanes on either side, like, there's traffic coming out of eventually Chima, which is residential, Doward, there is no self-access onto the highway. Anyone into 7-Eleven and independent Chevron intersection in a busy time, it's ridiculous. I mean, this is another 360 units plus when Chima comes along. So just ask council to represent the current residents and manage roads for our own livability. People are talking about that's, you know, don't like how it's going, we're looking for other spots, it's getting ridiculous. Our mandate shouldn't be to manage this so that anyone who wants to come live here in the next 15 years from anywhere is able to. There is growth that needs to be managed, we do need to grow, it needs to remain somewhat affordable, but we need to represent the current residents that have grown up here and live here currently. Engagement summary, the two major topics in the engagement summary for the OCP were manage growth effectively and ensure responsible development, and I ask that we all consider that very carefully going forward. Thank you for your time.
Thanks very much. Jesse? Please put your hand up if you'd like to speak.
From Jessica Knight, I live at 39754 Government Road through to Mayor and Council. I have a very deep biological and developmental historical knowledge of this site, and I want to echo a little bit of what Adam's concern was, although we're coming at it from slightly separate angles, which is, there's this, there's this 85 acres of parkland that's going to be given back to the district. And I already see the excitement, I can feel the excitement, we're going to do this with it, we're going to do that with it, we're going to have events, we're going to have trails, we're going to have, is it going to be another stick-and-ball park, portions of it like Brennan Park? That's not what this site is. The reason that this site failed as a golf course is because it's wet. It is a wetland. It has four creeks going from Hop Ranch, Hop Ranch Creek, which is not on the site, Newport Creek at the top of, I don't know the lot order, I don't know if Lot A is the top, B, C, D, whatever. Newport Creek at the top, Thunderbird Creek through the center, Meagan Creek at the bottom. This site is the stormwater-receiving area for most of the Garibaldi Highlands, most of the Chima lands. Putting the, putting the, putting stormwater into pipes and dumping it all past this site and through under the highway and just get rid of it is going to harm the environmental values on this site beyond how they've already been harmed since the golf course went in. So I just, I want to stress to you that, and Counsel Chappell, your concern as well about, well, what is this going to cost? I'm speaking for the environment today to say, I hope that the uses of this parkland, most of it will be left natural and allow it to function as wetland, fish habitat, frog habitat, invertebrate habitat, bat habitat. This site was the number-one producer of coho salmon within the boundaries of urban Squamish, within our boundaries. And when the Garibaldi Golf Course, Garibaldi Springs Golf Course went in, those numbers went down by on the order of 70 to 90%. I have the numbers, I know the history. At the very least, I would love to see a commitment from the developer to reinstall, we had a counting fence downstream of the development, but on Meagan Creek on Government Road, so sort of in the, in the vicinity of the Driving Creek pump station. I would love to see that counting fence go back in, and what that counting fence did, Mike Nelson put it in with Cascade Environmental, it was a monitoring condition of the golf course, the golf course is now defunct. What that counting fence allowed us to do was monitor the number of juvenile coho salmon leaving that whole system. And if there's any way that portions of this site could be devoted to fish habitat restoration, you know you've got the resources and the money to bring to that, and the biologists in town would love to work with the developer and with Mike on opportunities to reestablish the fish salmon productivity that was there in the past, and that counting fence would be a real good way to monitor whether we've met that objective. Thank you.
And just to acknowledge, Jesse was our environmental officer here for a number of years when this was going in, as well as.
when this was going in, as well as fisheries biologist. So we give some context to her, thank you.
Thanks very much. Yeah, come on up.
My name's Jordan Taslakalavet. I will be living at 1950 Dowett Drive. I just have four points I'd like to make. I'll try to be fast. One of them is just, somebody said that the mountain bike race would not have happened without the support. My recollection, we've had four big races a year for the past decade. I don't think that they're all divided by rivers and highways. People say contain them within the Chikai Fan in the past, and then do other races that are staged out of Alice Lake and out of Above West. I'm really happy that Polygon has shown an interest in that part of the community. But I don't think that it's fair to say that these kind of events would happen without their support. And also, with the existing trail network, we've actually made it, within the community, the trail network has grown around this space. It hasn't actually gone through it. So what we have currently, interbiking situation, has grown around the premise that this is green. Secondly, engagement. If you talk about community engagement, I was a little bit puzzled when I was basically told this was a done deal. This would happen. I was puzzled why they didn't come and ask us for support and change the OCP, that it was basically presented that this will happen, as opposed to, "Come help us change the OCP. Support us." It's a very different message, not actually what I considered to be engagement. I was one of the people collecting surveys. I talked to about 50 people downtown. Maybe 10 of them were people I knew, or 40 strangers. I said, "Do you live in Squamish?" They said, "No." I say, "Well, you chose a great day to visit. Thank you." But they said, "Yes." I asked them to sign the petition. Everyone said, "Yes." They all signed. So I think that's significant sample. Third, Coho. I echo what Chesey said about Coho. They're small creek spotters, so it's important that we protect them, because that's part of nature that people connect with. They're not big river fish that you don't get to see, like the Chinook and stuff. This is an essential part of our community, and people see them in their backyard. We need to protect those fish. Fourth. Development has been occurring in this area for like a good decade-plus. We've developed around this area already. The entire community, including my house, has been built based around this idea that this is green space. To come in now and change what's in the middle that holds it all together, it's like baking a pizza, taking it out after half an hour and changing the sauce. I just, I don't get it. It's the only problems that are coming with it, and it just, it just looks like a messy pizza. So, go.
Thank you very much. Anyone else want to... Yeah, come on up. I'd like to see it. I don't.
My name is Donna Wall, and I live on Tantalus Road in Ring Size. No one has mentioned yet parking. Can you put up that parking, you had your hub? My problem is with parking. I congratulate the bike race for what they did. Unfortunately, the parking was a nightmare. There was no two-lane driving down Tantalus Road. You couldn't get two lanes down there. So is that where you're proposing your parking is going to be? That's all bike lane, both sides.
Maybe you can't speak from there, Kevin. You've got to come up. And I'm happy to have questions answered.
So there's three areas proposed. One of them is the current works yard, which is down on Newport.
How many parking stalls would you have in there, sir?
That one is, there's a lot.
You probably are going to vote 50, so I'm going to block right.
50, we can do that.
50 down there.
Right.
And then, in the old scheme, the box is kind of out of diagonal there. The previous plan had a road going through there, so we were losing that parking. So there's about 41 in there.
That's where Outback crafting parts now?
Correct. And then, we've been talking to engineering, and there is at least preliminary support. Our idea is that that tantalous will be changed to provide parallel parking, and then the two lanes, because it's quite a lot of dedication.
But during the bike race, they were even parking in our parking slots inside our development. So whatever you decide to do, Council, you have to address the parking, and how us that live there are going to get out and around.
So maybe a question to Susan. Should this come to first reading? We'll have some more detail, as well as how the corridor trail is augmented or continued through that area? Because currently, the corridor trail, I believe, goes onto the road at that point for a little bit.
Yeah.
So, but we'll see those details at some point, because I agree with Donna. I mean, red blocks are fine, but I understand what it really means.
In response to that, yes, we will bring forward a staff report. The next staff report, you see, will have all of the detailed plans and the staff's analysis, including the engineering analysis of what's possible for the roads. So, you know, there were a lot of questions, but on the natural roads as well, strata versus public costs, so all of those will be addressed in the report we bring forward.
And I thought you said earlier that it was 900 parking stalls? Like, that seems like...
No, pardon me. The 900 parking stalls are in the current CD12 zone, applied to land that the district owns on Tantalus. When the habitat compensation was done for the Tantalus Road development, a bunch of parcels, four parcels, were created between Tantalus Road and the highway, and they were transferred to district ownership. And for some reason, those four parcels in the current zoning allow 900 parking spaces, even though their purpose is meant to be habitat protection. So in the zoning bylaw that we're gearing up to pull together, we're actually going to zone those lines as park to change that.
Okay, so there's not...
No, there's no 900 parking spaces. They were sort of an imaginary 900 at the time this CD12 zone was developed.
Very imaginary.
Yes.
Great, thank you. Anyone else want to, who wants to speak at this time? Put any hands. I thank everyone for, yeah, I know, Council. I'm going to get back to you just a minute. Thank you very much for all your input. Counselor Race, Council Chappelle.
Thank you. And this is, going back to staff, I forgot to ask it earlier, maybe Mr. Nelson, but Lot A2, which is the one at the very bottom, the proposed area right at the bottom, that little bulge, is just immediately across the red line, the property boundary, from lands that I remember rezoning in my first term on council into about a 42 or 48-unit small lot subdivision, also being serviced off the end of Newport, which hasn't gone ahead, I'm told, for environmental reasons. And I'm wondering, are there any environmental impediments to, that we're aware of, the development of Lot A2, which is more or less the same, same piece of land?
Through the chair, that is a very compromised piece of land. It's probably no different than when it was originally looked at. I think that's why it's at the very end of the phasing. I think Mike Nelson could probably speak to the habitat values better than I could.
I'll go with the mic.
Thanks, Mayor, Council. That's essentially the rationale of the proposed development would be on cleared fairways, where new development would be in undisturbed grounds, provide habitat for various species. There would be a requirement to approach DFO for an approval and authorization, because there is some ponds in that area that would have to be infilled and compensated for. But the reasoning for the development inclusion there is because it's already disturbed ground.
So it doesn't, just to clarify, the piece to the west isn't disturbed, so it has different habitat values than the Polygon piece to the east?
It is disturbed.
If you act on it, so if it is disturbed, therefore, it doesn't necessarily have the same applicable habitat issues?
That's correct.
Is that helpful?
Council Chappelle.
I think almost one question for our answer. I was interested, I guess, I'm interested in the report that was done previously when the land was turned down for rezoning in the last time with small lot subdivision. That be included in our package, please, and what are the reasons why it was turned down for smaller subdivision before.
I'm not sure the report will outline the reasons why, because...
The Council comments will outline.
They might not be incorporated in the motion.
And if they're not, and that's totally not...
We may have videotaped them. I don't know if the archive's back then or not.
We'll look whatever we have. We'll get minutes or a summary of the video archive. We can provide that next meeting.
Thank you.
Well, just, I was on council then, and that was in the fall of 2011 by the previous owner. My recollection was it was a combination of single-family lots that were full-size and small lots in different areas. Committee of the whole meeting, it was never actually a zoning bylaw or rezoning bylaw, and it was a committee of the whole discussion. What was termed by our director of planning at that time was a go or no-go decision, and it was a no-go decision. So we just didn't entertain a zoning bylaw, a zoning rezoning bylaw. If that helps you. I'm not sure. I can't remember all the discussions.
There was a myriad of issues and difficulties, had different issues with it.
I remember one of the clear reasons being that we couldn't afford to maintain 85 acres of park, and that the cost, you know, my big concern is that we have had years where we've stopped mowing our lawns in the parks that we do have. We can barely maintain the parks that we do have, and taking on 85 acres of parkland to maintain with a restricted budget is concerning to me. And I need to know how we afford to pay for 85 acres of park. I would want to see a considerable, you know, it need to be paid for, for long term, because I just, I can't imagine taking that on where we're already restricting the parkland we have with not mowing our lawns in some years to save $12,000 in lawn mowing costs. So that is concerning to me.
Yeah, and I think that's a whole future conversation. I look at this area, and I think Chesey articulated it well. This is a wildlife park. This is a very unscripted, some trails through it, but essentially, this is not going to be a manicured park. The values, the habitat values are the essential elements of the green space that is, that would be proposed in this proposal.
I agree. And Council Black?
Just building on a conversation from earlier today, we were talking about wildfires and things like that. I also, I'm wondering to what impact the scheme that's been outlined here would have in terms of inserting, you know, development, as well as additional users into an area that, you know, would be a fire-interfaced area. So just wanted to leave that thought there for consideration as things move on.
Thank you. So there's just a recommendation to receive the report unless Council has a decision... Two seconds. Has a decision to do something other than that. If we do that, it will proceed to first reading, and at that point, we would have a final, or a draft version of the bylaw in front of the Council. I think the only issue is timing, and we're getting into the summer. It's really challenging to have big decisions in front of the Council in the summer. However, first reading is not a final draft that goes to public hearing, just so we can understand that. It's essentially an opening salvo. It can be amended. It can be changed. It can be rejected at second reading. There are a whole bunch of variables that Council can decide. But just to keep that in mind, you know, public meetings and public hearings in the middle of summer are not ideal, just to keep that in mind. Council Black? I would like to point out the growing pile of candies in front of Council Black.
On the parking, just to make this clearer, every unit has two parking stalls, correct?
That's what's proposed, yes.
So when you look at all those other blocks and rents, whatever, and everything, that was for guests. It wasn't for the people who lived there.
Through the chair, there's several types of parking proposed. There's the parking spaces for each residential unit, two per unit are proposed under your zoning bylaw. There's also visitor spaces. Now, this is the difference. That have to be provided, so many per unit. But the type of parking that was outlined in the blocks is parking that's intended to serve the park.
Yeah, trail heads.
Yes, trailhead parking, and also some additional street parking.
I kind of figured that, but I didn't know, I didn't know there were any of that. And the other thing that I found really kind of interesting, can you go back to the two slides and show the original zone, the original zoning prior to the golf course being there? And this one I found quite, you know, I've been sitting in here for quite a few years, and I find these two slides really interesting.
Oh, just give me a second here.
Yeah, and maybe off with that question, obviously.
Yeah, that's it.
I'll make a quick comment about the corridor trails. We never completed an off-road, separate corridor trail in that area, because it was, we had quite a wide road, and it was just an expensive piece to do. So if we're looking at parking and those types of things, we can actually get, within this plan, separated off-road corridor trail through that area to actually help move people off the road in terms of pedestrians and cyclists. That would be fundamental to any sort of parking proposal.
Yeah, so, you know, here's the OCP. '89, '94, '95, '98, 2001, 2002, all OCP amendments. And then, so that's five. And then, flip four again, please. You know, so I'm just amazed at how much thought and energy has been put into this area over the years. I can remember when Wilf told me, when he started dubbing his at the back, he said, "Who would have ever thought someone would have put in a golf course and brought the road to my property?" And he had, at that time, limited-use property. And now it's a big subdivision that's going on up the hill into a bigger subdivision. So I just found, out of all the discussions today, that over the years, what's happened and how communities move forward, and so, it's just an observation.
Thanks. I just wanted to make sure that I commented about the corridor trail wasn't lost.
Thank you. I would also like to note that, since we've been able to measure our green space and actually understand our green space and our biology and our bicarbonate areas a lot better, that this has maintained its green corridors and has not been rezoned to housing and was turned down for rezoning to housing, because it was in our community's interest to maintain this as a green space. And there has been building around it, all around it, and it's still, including in 2011, when there is a housing proposal in the same way on it. And I do remember that in one of the, a lot of the comments about the green space and maintaining our green space corridors, you know, and, you know, the townhouses across from Burnet Park, that was employment land that was rezoned, and that wasn't housing land that was made into housing. It was, again, bought by a developer, came in for an OCP amendment, and was, took employment land out of our district. So the whole idea of good neighbors is, I appreciate always housing being built, but I also appreciate respecting what our residents put into the OCP. And to me, without having that OCP in front of me, and residents saying, "I would like green space being turned into residential areas," I really would have trouble with this application. I need, there's a lot of information I need. I'm not absolutely closed to the idea of this proposal. I like this proposal much better with the larger park space, with the better view quarters for the... And I also understand that actually opening up the space for the hotel. But, you know, the hotel and residents that come to stay in our community have more outdoor amenities than any other community in the world, mostly. We have so many outdoor amenities. And the reason that we maintain our community value is because we have environmental protection, because we respect our green spaces, and because we have, we access to the outdoors in the most immense, in the most immense way. So I have to really understand the benefits of building a few more homes with the amount of development that we have on the thing. I'm not opposed, when we need housing and we need to rezonate space, that's a different question. But when we have so much development in the blocks...
You're getting ahead of yourself, Chris.
Yeah. When we have so much development in the blocks, I'm, it's just, we, this is taking up a lot of our resources right now.
I was going to move that we receive a background report on the proposed development.
And so you require seconds?
Just to be clear...
Just to be clear, did I hear you correctly? We received this report when we go to first reading?
That is what staff said, that they would prepare a bylaw for us to consider. With the details that are not quite there yet.
Yes, we'll bring a full report forward with the bylaws and an analysis of what the developer, the developer's plans from today. And the reason that I moved this forward is that, yes, we use committee of the whole and we encourage feedback from the public, but I think this proposal deserves a full public process. And so I want to move it to first reading so that it can be part of our legislative process. Go ahead and go ahead, Counselor. That's the purpose behind moving this forward.
And I think this has gone through enough committee process that.
Yeah, it's time to.
That we will see something come forward for council to actually deliver it on specifically. Counselor Black and Wall.
I'm actually going to vote against this resolution, and I don't take that decision lightly. But I think it's important for us to be clear with the community where we stand on this issue and not to weed an apple cam down the garden path, so to speak. I don't think that this proposal and this particular piece of land should be taken out of our greenways and our OCP. So I'm going to be voting against this.
Just a reminder that motion on the floor is to receive the background report. I'll call the question. All those in favor? Oppose? Counselor Chappelle, Counselor Penn, Counselor Black and Wall oppose this motion case. Thank you very much. Most conservative. Moved by Counselor Pryor, second to dog. Counselor Black and Wall, all those in favor? Oppose? Motion carries.